It's October 22nd, 2020, regular board meeting of the Strongsville Board of Education to order. Mr. Ron Agnastu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissel?
Here.
Mrs. Soli?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
And Mrs. Hausen?
Here.
All present, would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next part of our agenda is our district goals, where we remind ourselves that our three district goals are student academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. And it goes without saying that during this time of COVID-19 pandemic, all three of those goals are challenged. Next is public comment. Our first public comment is Scott Storm. Mr. Storm, you know the drill.
Good evening to the Board of Education, Dr. Ryba, Ms. Palco, George. Scott Storm, 14111, Wilma Drive. Mr. President, just have one paper to read. It has been a long, exhausting few months for all of us, board members, administration, parents, but most importantly, for our students. We must remain focused on why we are all here, and that is, as a district, to provide the best education for all students. Above and beyond everything else, their educational success is our collective number-one concern. Strongsville parents are strong advocates of a quality education for all children, which is evident by their speaking up, joining the Remote 2.0 page, other pages, signing the petition, making phone calls, having in-person conversations with the superintendent, board members, and administration, sending emails, signing up for focus groups, and sharing their concerns. As parents, family members, and community members, we have worked tirelessly to share with you the need of a teacher for all students, not just for those in the buildings. They have shown their commitment through their actions. We are asking for and expecting what is best educationally for all children, all students in our district, whether they are in the building or at home. With that in mind, thank you to the board, to the superintendent, vice superintendent, other those within the administration who assisted in hosting focus groups where parents could share with you their concerns and community members' concerns about the remote student struggles within solo and Solo 2.0. Thank you for listening. The K-5 students need a dedicated teacher who is with them every day, all day. They need to build a relationship with their teacher, and their teacher needs to build a relationship with them throughout the school year in order to foster growth. Children need everything a teacher does. They need teachers to facilitate a complete learning experience daily across the curriculum. We have always trusted that the educational model the district has implemented in the buildings is the best, in the best educational interest of the students. Therefore, the closer you mirror the in-building experience, the better the result will be for the remote students. The other group of remote students in grades 6 through 12 has many who are struggling to digest and comprehend the material on their own in the solo program and desperately need your immediate support. For example, the district needs to provide live streaming as much as possible, which could act as a life raft to help keep them afloat as they bob above and below the stormy sea of educational waters this year. We thank you for taking accountability for the situation, and we look forward to hearing you take responsibility with the proposed changes this evening. We anxiously await the parents' suggestions for educational improvement to come to fruition tonight. We are expecting that the changes will fall in line with the district's mission statement, which is, Strongsville City Schools, in partnership with the community, will ensure all students reach their fullest potential through challenging curriculum and activities provided by a highly qualified, motivated staff in a safe, supportive environment with up-to-date facilities and Thank you again for your time, your effort in the past few weeks in working to provide a long-term, sustainable solution that demonstrates all students are valued equally regardless of their learning location. May God bless all of us as we move forward in the best interest of the children and the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next is Rochelle Gallagher. This is your first time, name and address, and you have approximately three minutes.
Okay, I'll talk fast. Rochelle Gallagher, 16540 North White Oaks. So I have a child enrolled in the responsible restart plan in the high school. I trust Dr. Ryba to lead our district and the model that he developed. Last week, you voted to send our kids to the high school full-time where the county risk is a level red. The plan every parent in this high school agreed to 10 weeks ago when we sent our kids to school was that our kids would not be at the school full-time when the county is red. To me, this vote violates what has been communicated for months that the health and safety of our teachers, our students, and our staff was number-one priority and all decisions would be based on that. The county risk level is our only measure of safety. Trust is built on integrity, doing what you say you're going to do. We're repeatedly being asked as parents to trust you, and I hope you can see where my dilemma lies. The model states unless immediate actions required, that a one-week notice would be issued. The increase of a county risk level is a reason to take immediate action. I ask the board to remove that timeline of notification, allow Dr. Ryba to do his job as superintendent, and to execute the plan that the board approved. It's apparent that the high school cannot social distance. It's no fault of the kids, they want to be there, we all want to be there. It's just capacity issue and how big they are and the complexity of their cohorting. I urge the board to adopt, and this wouldn't be my top priority, but a hybrid model at the high school until at least the semester ends. Give Dr. Ryba and his team time to find true solutions at the high school, just not Band-Aids. We're putting our kids in the equivalent of a Black Friday rush during Walmart during a pandemic, and we truly don't know what's going to happen in two weeks. I really hope it's not as bad, but I don't know. We know that streaming classes for overflow is not effective, Dr. Ryba. I'm an educator too, I was, and I 100% agreed with you on that point, but we're using that as our solution. My son has three of those classes, and I'm fully okay putting my son in a situation and losing a little bit for the benefit at all. But when I asked the district how much percentage of that class, they wouldn't tell me, which leads me to believe it's a little bit more than a few classes. And if, by the way, if we keep that, can we just increase the Wi-Fi? Because the consistency is a little bit sketchy. I know that the school size is only a few, or, by the way, predictions are now saying, and I will say, last year, I thought when I didn't go back to work in March, I'd be back this summer, and then it was the end of the year, and now they're telling me it's next year. Like, I have no idea when I'm going back into the office. Predictions are now saying that we're going to be under these current restrictions till at least mid-2021, and we really need to give our kids a really good, optimal solution. I know it may not be an ideal, but optimal in what we have. I want to be clear for everybody, because it's so nasty right now in social media, it's horrible being a mom right now, that I don't want any of these schools shut down. In fact, I want the complete opposite. I want as many opportunities for our kids to stay engaged and connected as possible beyond just academics. I mean, the clubs and all of those things are so important. My child was a senior last year, and her thing was, if she knew that that was the last day she was in school, she would have done things differently, just for closure. And it's a testament, because the kids in the high school didn't want to leave, they loved our district. And I will say, my son has benefited from cross-country, and I thank the district for offering the sports as much as we can within the confines. I know, Laura, I mean, you're a big part of that big night, and things and opportunities that we can be creative, to just give them something is phenomenal. My really fear is somebody above us is going to come up and completely shut us down, and we've got nothing. My second ask is really just for true transparency on the data. The district stopped tracking the data criteria publicly September 25th, and when we track data, it's important to try and, when we track trends down, we need to track them up too, and indicators we're leading kind of up for us, and it really helps us with decision-making. My final ask really, truly, of our Strongsville community, can we just be respectful of each other? Never once was this plan stated that if the county was red, the high school would be full-time, and we all know that. Every one of us who signed up knew that. But for those of you that want your kids full-time and you're just feeding fully, I will just say to you, you've got private options too, if you want to keep telling us to go solo. And it doesn't feel good to say that, I don't want to say that. We all want our kids in Strongsville. That's why we're fighting, that's why we're all fighting amongst ourselves. Our behavior of our parents is just diverting our resources to constantly address us instead of, constantly address us as a parent and responding to us, and it's really taking our focus off the kids. I can't imagine the time and staff that everyone, the board, and Dr. Ryba, and your team is going through trying to create these solutions. If, I feel like you're playing a game of whack-a-mole, and it's just that everything is popping up, and you just can't get fast enough. It's really embarrassing, not for you guys, but just for our community. We're all over the news, it's really not positive, and it's not a place that I really am proud for us to be. In closing, I'm just asking the board to trust the model that Dr. Ryba put out. If you actually looked and we looked back now, it actually fit perfectly against the criteria, a little tweaks in here and there, notices and things like that, that's perfectly normal in big project implementations. And even with the school, with the small percentage, I mean, you got to problem-solve those little things, and then you give and take. And I trust you, Dr. Ryba, I really trust you, and I hope that the board can trust you. And I think that, you know, if given space, and we give Dr. Ryba and his team time and space to figure out these complex problems, that we can have probably the best solution across Ohio, and I have no doubt in that. We want to get our kids fully in that high school safely. It may not be this semester, it may not be this week, and we just need to accept that. None of us want that, but we might need to accept it, it's our reality. I want nothing more to distrust the school district and the health and safety of everyone, that the health and safety of everyone's our top priority in the decisions. Dr. Ryba said early on that when he led this district cautiously during this time, and now is not the time to take chances, and he would listen to the board of health since he's not a health professional. So please, can we just work together, not against? We have phenomenal teachers, parents, staff, admin, I think we've got some of the brightest. I know if we just work together, Strongsville, we are much better than this, and our kids are really counting us. Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle. And last is Jenny Crossing, did I say that right?
Crosby.
I'm sorry?
It's Crosby.
Crosby. And again, your name and address, and you have approximately three minutes.
My name is Jenny Crosby. My address is 8364 Barton Drive. I did speak at the last minute, so I won't take, at the last meeting, so I won't take a lot of your time. But I just want to say that, Mr. Ryba, you know, we've had email communication since the beginning of this, you know my stance on it. I work at a major hospital in the city, and I know that we get a lot of data, we get a lot of information from smaller community hospitals. They're not seeing the biggest impact that this virus can have on families. I do believe that you guys try to make the decisions that are in the best interest of the students, but the frustration that we are feeling as parents is that you said in the beginning that we could choose solo, and those of us who did choose solo were then promised a remote plan that was sufficient enough to meet the standards that you guys are able to provide to students in Strongsville. So a lot of us opted out of it, thinking that you promised us that we were going to go for nine weeks remote. We opted into that program, and when you announced two weeks after that that we were going to go to a hybrid, to the blended learning model, we were apprehensive, but we trusted that you guys would do the right thing and you would make the right decisions. We've entrusted you with our children's health and safety. And we feel like we were misled purposely, because as much as people like to tell us, we've been turned into the enemy in our communities, in our homes with our children, when we have to say, "We've let you, we decided that you were going to go to the remote plan, and now that plan has changed." So now, for you to expect us to pull them out and into solo without, and there was no clear guidance on if we did that in the second semester, the numbers went down, and it was safe for them to return, we couldn't be promised that they would be on the same team with the teachers that they already established relationships with. We couldn't be promised that they would even be allowed to be in the same classrooms. My son is passionate about music, that's his passion, he's involved in the band. And the opportunities that were given to the students that are athletics, in athletics, were not the same opportunities that were presented to our children that are passionate about music, that were in the marching band. The students were allowed to play, the cheerleaders were allowed to go to the games. The marching band got to march in three games this season. So for people to say that solo is the equivalent, it's not, it's not. Our kids deserve that enrichment. Our kids deserve interaction with their teachers. We're not asking for, and we're not even judging the parents that need their kids in school. We understand that the kids want to be in school, and we want that for them. But as parents, as administrators, as people who are in positions of power, sometimes we have to, we have to make the right decision, even if it's not what our kids want. Like, nobody wants our children to be at home and be deprived of their education and the services that you guys can provide for them. So I think, you know, and like you mentioned, on social media, we're being attacked, they're telling us that we're not jobs, and that it's not that big of a deal. Like, I work in a hospital where I see the impact of this every day, and it is a big deal. Maybe not to you if you haven't been affected by it, but when you, when your family is affected by it, it is a big deal. And it, to sort of, and the model works. You said it yourself, Mr. Ryba, that in the smaller buildings and the elementary schools, the kids can stay in one room, the teachers can move around, you can cohort them together. It doesn't work like that at the high school and the middle school level. There's too many kids in the building. People are comparing us to Padua. There's 746 children in Padua, there's almost 1,900 in Strongsville High School. There is no comparison there. There's no comparison to the private schools where they have small classrooms, where it's easier for them to maintain social distance, to put those procedures in place that keep them safe. We are not asking for anything that is not possible for the district to provide. We're not asking for you to tell other people that they need to keep their kids home. We're asking for you to provide remote instruction to our students from their teachers, because that's what we were promised. It has nothing to do with politics, it has nothing to do with who's right or who's wrong at this point. It's a public health issue, it's a global pandemic, it's not just happening here in Strongsville, Ohio. And that's all I have to say.
So I want to thank everyone for their comments. I've said before that we consider public comment an opportunity to listen, and I do appreciate all the comments. Your comments aren't in a vacuum, we've been, we've had our focus groups, et cetera, we talk about, we work through these issues every day. So I'm hoping throughout the rest of this meeting, you'll see some response to that, and then we'll collaborate and work together on next steps. But I appreciate everyone's comments. Next on our agenda, which I folded. Do we have any recognition, Dr. Ryba?
No recognitions tonight.
Well, at the very least, we should recognize the soccer team. Do we have a final score?
It was 4-0, 4-0 when I left, around 7:00.
I'm confident that the 0 stayed, and maybe the 4 went up.
Yeah, hopefully.
So congratulations to the soccer team. Next on our agenda is approval of minutes. We have the September 3rd and September 17th Board of Education meetings. The district video and audio recordings are permanent part of the minutes, and they're available on the web. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausen. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Ron Agnastu.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next on our agenda is Treasurers' Report. Mr. Ron Agnastu.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Good evening, everyone. I have a few items for your consideration tonight. The first item is the monthly financial report for the month ending September 30th, 2020, which could be found in Exhibit A. In addition to that, it's not part of the exhibit, but I do have a new financial report supplement that I've kind of been working on to go along with the, to go as a supplement to the monthly report, which you'll find at your desk, and I have here on the screen that I'll kind of go over the pages of it. It's different in the sense of, it's a comparison to the five-year forecast versus actually projected and how we're trending for the fiscal year. The five-year forecast was presented in the September meeting as part of a budget forecast, and we will update that version and be presented again and adopted by the board in November, which will be filed to ODE to meet our filing requirement for the fall filing. This report is broken down into the following sections. The first page is a dashboard of an over and under revenues and expenditures, and projecting any cash balance. Then there's a revenue analysis and expenditure analysis. So moving on to the first dashboard. So through September, after three months of the fiscal year, revenues are trending $1.2 million higher, or 1.5%, and expenditures are trending 1.73% under, or $1.3 million, which, if that trend continues, it would add an additional $2.5 million of cash to the end-of-the-year estimate, which was $4 million, bringing that surplus up to $6 million. Also, cash is $9.9 million higher through September of this year compared to last year, and the primary reason for that, it was the new levy that was, that we started collecting on at the beginning of the calendar year. Moving on to the revenue analysis. Revenues for the month of September were $11.3 million higher compared to last September. Although it's higher, it's more of a timing issue. Typically, property taxes are collected in August, and July and August. This year, because of COVID, it was pushed back a month, and they were collected in July, August, and the remaining was collected in September, so that's why it's significantly higher. If we go to the bottom of the page, year-to-date revenues kind of normalize, and it's $932,000 higher compared to last September through the year-to-date. The $932,000 represents the higher collection of income taxes net against, we typically receive our homestead and rollback reimbursement from the state in September, but because property taxes were delayed, we should be getting it this month, hopefully. If not, then next month. So that was a month delayed. And then also, we get a good portion from kindergarten, full-day tuition at the beginning of the school year, but because we were remote learning, and this year we spread it out through the entire year, month-to-month, those payments are delayed as well. And that's also offset by state revenue is down $355,000 due to the state's COVID reduction that they implemented last year that carried into this school year. So in total, with that compared to the forecast, revenues are trending $1.2 million higher, 1.5%. And the primary reason for that so far is because of property taxes. In the forecast, we had assumed the 3.5% reduction in the fall collection due to the uncertainty with COVID of how the tax bills would come in, and the tax bills came in close to what was projected, or not projected, what was close to historical collection rates. So that's why the revenues are higher this year. But for revenues, we're still at risk for, there's another collection period for the spring collection for property taxes, so as this pandemic continues, and then also state funding, right now, state funding is going to remain the same unless, the caveat they've said, unless there's another state shutdown, then they, most likely, revenues would be reduced, state funding as well. So summarize revenues, $81.4 million was forecasted, right now, we're trending at about $82.6 million. Moving on into expenditures. Comparing September of this year to September of last year, expenditures are up by $568,000. A little portion of that is salaries and benefits, but the biggest chunk is other expenditures, and what that is made up is the county auditor fees. We do pay a 1% county auditor fee for them collecting our taxes, so because the revenue was delayed a month, so was the associated expense, so it was a timing. And then if you look to the bottom of the page, revenues for this time of year, for the fiscal year, cumulative through September compared to last year, are up $42,000. But if you look at the chart, salaries and benefits are up $225,000, while purchase services are bringing it down. And the primary reason for that is some of our contracts that we have in place, some of the services haven't provided yet because we were in remote. Now that we're coming back, we should see an increase in that as well, and it's also timing of when those invoices are received and paid. And then how we're trending for expenditures, $1.3 million under, most of it is in salaries and benefits. Salaries make up about $433,000 of the, or 1% of that total, and benefits are 3.3%, and a lot of it is due to some open positions that were budgeted and that are in the process of being filled, and changes in benefit levels, or benefits as well is taking it. So we'll keep an eye on that, but these totals also don't include any adjustments that we might need to make throughout the year based on remote learning, based on remote learning and other needs that might come up due to the circumstances we face. So this year could be a volatile year compared to years past because of, due to the uncertainty of the situation we're in. So that's the new report. It'll be on the website under the Treasury Department with the monthly report as a supplement. So it's a little bit different compared to the normal monthly report, but it compares the forecast to actuals and trends. So it's more numbers than the other one, which is more charts. Any questions? No.
I like the report, it encapsulates everything, and it gives us a good snapshot, and lets the board and the admin team keep a pulse of what's going on. It goes without saying that there is so much uncertainty. We need to continue to watch where we're at, and, you know, nobody, I don't have a crystal ball, nobody has a good crystal ball, but we'll continue to be wise with our finances.
So moving on to Item B, which requires a second vote, or a standalone vote. It's a scoreboard advertising sales agreement. It's with the athletic boosters, it's a revision from the March 12th agreement, and this revision encompasses the August 14th Raising Canes donation of $30,000 for the scoreboard. So it'll bring down what was owed by the boosters, a revision from what was owed from the $81,000 down to $51,000, so it's a revision to that agreement. I'll read it. "Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer," some scratched in the agenda as a superintendent, "but of the treasurer, that the Board of Education approves the revised scoreboard advertising agreement between the Board and Education and the Strongsville Athletic Boosters. The boosters intend to make donations over the next five years totaling the amount of the high school main gymnasium scoreboard purchase of $141,000, less the amount contributed by Serpentine Chevrolet of $60,000 from the February 20th, 2020 donation agreement, and less the amount contributed by Raising Canes of $30,000 from the August 14th, 2020 donation agreement. The boosters made an additional donation of $30,000 in December of 2019, which will be followed..." which will be followed by five annual donations of four thousand two hundred dollars per year thereafter. The district will invoice the boosters annually in November, beginning November of two thousand and twenty, with a potential for a larger annual donation should adequate funds become available to fulfill the fifty-one thousand dollar commitment earlier per the terms outlined in the exhibit, which can be found in Exhibit B.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Bissel. Any discussion? As always, we should thank the Athletic Boosters for all that they do. This is a very convoluted, uh, motion. Ultimately, what it boils down to is, uh, this was always the Athletic Boosters' plan, uh, to continue to get different advertising and sponsorship agreements and therefore, uh, make the district whole as soon as possible. So I anticipate we'll see more of these in the future. Um, and each time it'll, uh, it'll reduce the remaining balance. So, uh, our heartfelt thanks to the boosters for all that they do. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, would you take the roll?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Mr. Onagastu, I'm going to abstain from this vote due to the fact that my husband is the president of the Athletic Boosters. I don't feel it's right that I vote on it.
Thanks.
And so one abstention and the motion carries. Back to you.
Yep. For items C and D, uh, they're related. Item C is new fund for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, Fund Five Seventy-Two, SE, Special Cost Center Ninety-One Twenty-One, which is a Title One expanding opportunities for each child grant, which was a non-competitive grant issued by the Ohio Department of Education. And item D is the grant approval for that grant of eleven thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. Uh, the grant will be used for, it's for, um, the high school, it's to be used for high school students and one of, and we're going to use it to provide additional course offerings for AP classes and text. And then item E, which can be found in Exhibit C, is the fiscal year twenty-one amended appropriations, and the changes are outlined in the exhibit. There's no further questions, that concludes my report.
Anything else for George? Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. What I want to do is share a few, uh, updates and, and, and highlights and recommendations. So three things I would like to cover with the board tonight. The first is recommendations, uh, looping back on a conversation we had earlier about allocating, uh, professional development time for our staff. Uh, secondly, I want to, um, give a summation of our, uh, six focus groups that we held uh, on the solo program and recommendations for next steps. And then finally, uh, thoughts and recommendations on our restart graphic, uh, as we move forward. So, uh, with that, I want to loop back, as I said, on the, on the recommendation for PD and collaboration day. So I just want to share that, uh, you know, I had the opportunity to spend most of my morning at the high school today and a portion of the day at the, the middle school. And I had a student advisory group, um, and, and throughout the, usually in the buildings a couple times a week. But I just want to compliment our staff. For our staff, our teachers, our administrators, everybody from top to bottom, you know, it made me proud to be in the building today. Uh, you know, unfortunately, a lot of my job has been, uh, dealing with a lot of different issues. Uh, that takes me out of the building. But I just want to share with, from, from top to bottom, everybody around, everybody is working tirelessly to do the best job that they possibly can. The way that they've stretched out of their comfort zone, the way that we've implemented new procedures, the fact that I understand that at the high school level, when you have nineteen hundred students there, the hallways are not going to be perfectly socially distanced, but every day they're implementing new strategies and to see everybody working together, uh, to try and lessen that. And, and so to see how far our staff has stretched and pushed themselves to get better, um, I, I, as, as a colleague of theirs, uh, it makes me proud to see the work they're doing. At the same time, it makes me recognize two things. First of all, that the training does not, should not stop. It needs to continue. And secondly, if we want it to be integrated and systematic, we need to give the people time to process, debrief, work together, collaborate in new and different ways. And that's what's going to have the synergy to spread across our district. So I know I presented a plan earlier, I've modified that plan. Um, and so what I'm recommending is that the board give me the authority, uh, to implement three professional development days. Uh, one of those days would be November third. This would not impact students at all, it's already a non-school day. Uh, to provide training for our staff, we swapped a, a summer day for the November day. So this, if, if we want to require, uh, staff that would not typically report or already fulfilled their PD, uh, responsibility, uh, we would need to provide compensation to do that. So I'm recommending that we provide compensation. Uh, Erin in her department has, uh, federal grant dollars that we receive each year for professional development, and that's typically used as we go to conferences. Well, nobody's going to conferences this year, uh, or the price is extremely reduced because they're virtual conferences, so we have that, those dollars available. So that would be the first day, um, that we would, uh, ask staff if they're interested, uh, and we have, uh, plans for them to, to come in that PD day. Uh, the other two days were similar to two days I recommended before. Uh, one would be January fifteenth, that's the Friday prior to Martin Luther King Junior Day. Uh, the second would be February twelfth, that's the Friday before President's Day. Um, these are scheduled in-person days. I'm recommending that they be switched to remote learning days for students. Uh, and, and those would be the two additional days that we u, utilize. So what's the rationale? There's no other non-student days that are out there that aren't associated with the traditional holiday break or, or, or long weekend break. We don't have another, uh, day, you know, we had NEOEA Day or whatever it used to be called. Uh, it's still called that, but, uh, not as popular as it used to be when I taught. Um, but those days are, are gone in the calendar. So we have to look at, at days that are already provide, or days that would be already in session. The other thing is we, we talk about, I think we can all, um, understand, this is a stressful time. Uh, and we all have our ups and our downs and, and our struggles and our successes. And we have to, we have to think and consider about the mental health of our staff. That, a, as we push to grow and get better, um, there's times where we just need, um, that time to collaborate, to plan, to catch our breath a little bit. And, and I put in, I know it's said, and it's stated in the slide, but if we're not at the top of our game as adults, that's going to transfer to our students. Um, and our staff has done a phenomenal job of being at the top of their game, but we need to allow that time, uh, to do that. Uh, and through March, um, just with these three days, that will allow one day per month, that will allow staff, as I said, to catch their breath, learn, collaborate, and sustain that integration. That's the key piece. How do we sustain, uh, that integration? I mean, just as an example, on Friday, uh, October sixteenth, we had you guys, the board approved one of these days, and we had one of these days. And so not only was it, was it used for professional development and collaboration, but we had a lot of our teachers working with students at home, whether small group, individual signup times, especially at the secondary level, to help students catch up, to help students get their footing, to provide interventions and supports, uh, that may not have been available based on a traditional teacher's schedule. And so just as the thought I share with the board is, as we take a look at changing two live instruction days for two asynchronous days, is, is the potential cost of those two less live in, in, uh, live instructional days worth the potential benefit of improved instruction for all of the other days in between, uh, for the school year? So with that, I'm going to ask Jenny, um, to share a little bit about, uh, as Jenny and, and Erin and Andy and a lot of Dave and our, our team, um, plan and provide PD, I want Jenny to take a little bit to say, kind of, what would these days be utilized? And what was some of the feedback we received from the October sixteenth day?
Yeah, so I think, you know, as I've mentioned before, when we, we discussed these PD days and what would be done, you know, i, again, overwhelmingly heard, we, we took, we gave a survey out, and overwhelmingly, just the time to collaborate, work together, share ideas, strategies, you know, the landscape of what they're doing and how they have to adapt and change, it takes time. So I'll give an example that was in one of the feedback. You know, what used to be, maybe I would hand out, you know, a, a worksheet that, that students would complete, and I would go around and facilitate and help them. Now I'm having to figure that out, adjust it so that it meets the needs of the students, and put it on my Google Classroom, maybe make it even more interactive and more engaging for kids that may be working asynchronously at home. And all of that takes more time than it would if they were all present in front of me and I'm handing something out to them. So, um, you know, just again, to try to create and share and make things, um, you know, personalize the learning for what students truly need i, is important. We've heard loud and clear that we, that parents want videos, they need that, they need that help when students are quarantined, to have those instructional videos that they can watch. Um, it just helps so much to see that, that instruction. And so, you know, not only just to create the videos, but to decide, okay, what power standards am I really trying to teach here? You know, to watch a forty-five minute video for a second grader, that's not, that's not going to go well. Um, so how can I kind of condense it, make sure what's important, what the student needs to know, and, and work with my colleagues to share the load, I think, to have them plan for that and create them. And, and we've seen some examples, and they're just, just wonderful examples that they put together on that day. Um, and they've, they've done that for, for the first trimester. So they're, they're working through that, but the, the nervousness is, okay, now what? Now I, we need to do it again, you know, for, for the next trimester. Again, just continuing with the technology that they've learned and try to implement that. There's so many different things that we've provided for them, options that will work for whatever discipline and whatever they need. But to, to learn it is one thing, and then to kind of figure out, okay, how does this work in my discipline? How can I apply this and use it, I think is important. And again, that takes time. Um, and like I said, we, we gave a survey out. So I just want to read a few of the quotes that, um, from our teachers so that you can hear from them. "It was nice to be able to present on Pairdeck. In my advanced session, we were able to share ideas and learn how each other is using it. I like the idea of teachers who are using tech to get together, to talk about best practices and learn from each other. Every time I present on something, I learn, uh, so much from my other staff members. With this new world of education, it takes consistent and countless hours of collaboration. This time to work with other buildings and my team members allowed me to grow as an educator and have better resources for my teaching. Our team created videos to provide enrichment for grades three to five. We'd like to create more enrichment videos for grades K to two next time. The planning time in the afternoon was amazing. I was able to plan and create lessons that my students will truly enjoy. I wasn't just throwing stuff together or using what I did last year as a last resort. I was able to convert work into online assignments and update my Google Classroom. The time was greatly appreciated." So again, there's more, more like that. But I think overall, they had flexibility for what they needed. You know, every teacher is in a little bit of a different spot with technology or what they used to do and how they're evolving. And so to allow that flexibility, the time and the collaboration, I think, um, overall was, was very, um, appreciated by, by our staff. So thank you for the, for the day. Um, hopefully it gives us the momentum to keep moving forward.
And so one of the things, as we take a look at what is the effectiveness of the work that we're doing, the time we're taking away from students, uh, in terms of asynchronous versus synchronous learning. Uh, as Jenny shared, we, we do surveys at the end to, to assess the effectiveness. In education, it's a little more challenging because, uh, there's not a clear product that you're, you're developing. You could say, we made this, we did this, uh, but we're building capacity and we're building skills to be implemented in the classroom. So the best way we, tools we have to measure the outcome are staff surveys and student experience surveys to assess the effectiveness of those experiences and implementations and desired outcomes. So if we're saying that we're providing this professional development so we can give teachers the time to create meaningful asynchronous videos so students can access learning no matter where their location is, is that transferring to our students? Let's talk to our students and, and get feedback, uh, from them. Uh, so those are things that we can bring back to the board, uh, in later November. Uh, and then, you know, we have PD days that would, are already established in December and March, and then the two that I'm recommending in January and February. Um, so to wrap up this part of the conversation, um, there does not require a, this is not technically a change to the calendar, it's a change of location of learning. Uh, therefore, there's not a, official vote of the board. Uh, or is there a thirty-day hearing that's typically a part of the calendar? Um, but I do need, uh, consensus of the board as to whether I have the authority to move forward and, uh, begin to communicate these professional development days or whether I do not. So, Mr. Miko?
Any questions for Cameron, any discussion?
Uh, Dr. Roberts, as far as the, the days, uh, I think in any profession, the doing professional development is, is absolutely necessary. Uh, I'm more curious about the, and I'm glad we, we did the one on the sixteenth. So, um, for the next one on November third and the one in December, we have topics that are already being discussed as far as what will be covered. And I'm guessing the ones in the springtime are probably going to evolve as, as those needs come up. Is that fair to say?
That's fair to say in terms of the spring. Jenny, in terms of, uh, November?
Yeah, so I think, uh, one of the questions on our survey was, like, what else do you need? Um, like I said, there's still the technology piece. Um, I know there are some teachers that are looking, you know, at better, better, how do I better create? Not coming out right. Um, how do I create better videos that my students can access and watch? You know, whether it be through a live streaming and I record that, whether it be pre-recorded, you know, just again, perfecting the sound, perfecting the technology so that we can move forward. I know, uh, there were a lot that, you know, talking about grading and assignments and how can I be a little bit more creative in that way? Especially when I don't have students maybe in, in my class or they're quarantined and having to do assessments that way. Um, again, I, I think in the, in the spring, we relied a lot on feedback and giving kids the right feedback to continue the learning. And if they made a mistake, you know, how can I better what I, what I just learned? And so that's something that they would like more, um, more professional development on. So that, you know, and again, like I said, just the ability to work together, you know, just the disruption and all the learning and the gaps from last year. We just need to make sure that we're covering what we need to cover and making sure that our students are set up for success moving forward. So that does take time with maps and pacing and that kind of thing. So those were some of the things that they mentioned.
Thank you.
I asked this, uh, the last time we talked about this, I'm going to ask it again. Do we have space in our schedule to just give our students these days off? And here's, here's my thinking on this. If the teachers need a break for their mental health and we have students who are behind and the teachers are taking them time to catch them up, do the students also need that mental health day and time to catch up?
So, yes, we would have time in the day except for preschool and half-day kindergarten. And that decision would require a calendar hearing of thirty days and a, and a vote by the board because it would change the number of instructional hours that we're providing.
That just the two days?
Those two, because before we were talking about like four or five. Just the two puts the half-day kindergarten over?
Yeah, they are, because we started, uh, school, uh, a week later, uh, that put them right at the, the brink of it, um, or right at the edge of it. So I, I believe they maybe just had a few hours, I would have to look to verify, but it would still put them over, and then it would be the, uh, the thirty days in voting.
The, the days are on Friday though, right?
Say that again?
Aren't those days on Fridays?
Oh, you're right. So, so that would eliminate preschool, so it would just be half-day kindergarten.
Okay.
Thank you for reminding me.
I don't think we have any issue with November third. Is that correct? And we have, we, we're, we're redirecting the funds, so we're still being good financial stewards. Uh, we're not in school on that day already. I, you know, I was the one who, uh, voiced the concern about, uh, about instruction, et cetera, but you've convinced me. So I think you have, uh, enough of consensus that the development, or the pro-dev is important. I know asynchronous is the fifty cent word. Asynchronous, for me, in my opinion, is a fifty cent word for homework. I would challenge that if we're going to do this, we need to find ways to turn that homework into something more than, uh, than it's been in my experience so far. But I, you know, I think that's a, as far as the one, uh, the one idea was, how do we, how do we balance the opportunity cost and invest in that, in that professional development? And so that would be my measurement is, how can we use that professional development in those days to make asynchronous learning more, somehow more interactive, more engaging, more something than homework? Um, because I do think Michelle has a point. Uh, the asynchronous learning i, is difficult for a lot of students. It's difficult for a lot of the adults. So, uh, that would be my challenge. But I think you have consensus to go forward and, and use those pro-dev days. And then I, I look forward to the reports back because the current reports are great, and let's have some more.
Okay.
Can I ask a question of clarity? Are we, are we moving, it's on. Um, are we moving forward on November third and revisiting what we're doing on the January and February? Or are we moving forward on all of them?
My, and again, this is consensus, but my instinct is to move forward on all of them. Uh, give, give our parents some-
As asynchronous-
Correct.
Days. Okay. I don't think there's much I'm going to do about it.
I, well, no, what I think we do is be positive about it, and I think we've heard the, I mean, I share the concerns. So let's see what we can do between now and then to address them.
Okay.
Does everyone agree? Act now? You have your consensus.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and I know our staff appreciates it, so on behalf of them, thank you. What I want to move on to next is, uh, a summation, um, and kind of next steps for the, our solo focus groups. Uh, so we, uh, we had a series of, of- Uh, so we, uh, we had a series of focus groups, uh, and the purpose, as we talked about with them, was to gain information from our parents that have kids, uh, to get their experiences, insight, and possible next steps. So we wanted to hear what were the lived experiences of our students, so we can solve real problems, um, based on holistically, uh, hearing from as many that were interested. And so the feedback that we gained, uh, is gonna be shared with the board tonight, and it's gonna be used by both of us to determine our next steps and, as we take a look at solo programming. So just to kinda give a summation of where, what we had. Uh, over seventy families were invited to participate. They invite, they participated in six separate focus groups over three days. Uh, besides one of those focus groups, that was, uh, a mix of families that had students in multiple programs. The rest of them were specific to K to five Lincoln Learning, uh, K to five Solo 2.0, six to twelve Edgenuity and Ed- Edmentum, um, and as I said, uh, a mix of all together. Uh, we use the same set of questions, uh, for e- for each, uh, group, uh, so that we can establish themes and patterns between the answers. Um, and based on what we learned through the focus groups, we're looking at enhancements, um, just in terms of a timeline. Uh, they would be implemented by the start of the second trimester for applicable Lincoln Learning and Solo 2.0 students in grades K to five. Uh, and then second semester, uh, for our students in, uh, Lincoln Learning, K to five, and Edgenuity and Edmentum. And so I'll talk a little bit about where those timelines fit with the different pathways, uh, because that does, uh, have an impact. Um, so I just wanna kind of anecdotally state is, as we go through these enhancements, we also need time to implement. Um, and so, please remember that we had our last focus group on Monday. So between Monday evening and today, uh, I think we've come up with some solid recommendations moving forward. Uh, but in terms of an organizational view of what we have to do to implement those, there's a lot of steps to get that going, and this will give us some necessary time to make sure we're successful moving forward. So what I did, and I'll, I'll send, as I, as I do most of the board slides, I will send this out to our, our families, uh, on Monday, uh, with my update. Um, but, uh, just wanna thank, uh, Erin Green, our Director of Curriculum, Jenny Poco, our Assistant Superintendent, and Dan Foster, our Communication Coordinator, uh, were with me, uh, on, uh, most of the calls, if not all of the calls, as well as, uh, we had some board members that were able to participate, which was appreciated. Uh, Katie Hawk, who is our Solo 2.0 Program Coordinator. Um, so we had a lot of folks there to listen and learn, and to, to make sure that we were hitting the mark. So, when you take a look at, we took, uh, oh, I didn't. We had people that took copious notes, uh, as we went throughout the process. Uh, so there was a lot of stuff said. So we understand that parents may have said things that are not captured here, but we looked at themes. What, what things resonated with parents. So, K to five Lincoln Learning, Lincoln Learning, um, again, uh, that's a standalone asynchronous curriculum, uh, that, uh, we have some, we have students in, probably a little over a hundred students in K to five Lincoln Learning currently. Um, and so what were some of the themes is, they made a choice based on their family. A lot of that choice was, we didn't wanna go through the different changes. We wanted structure, we wanted consistency, and we picked that this was the best option for our family. Uh, they felt predominantly the platform was user-friendly. Uh, they really liked the video content, but thought there just simply wasn't enough video content. They wanted more of, of that. Uh, our, our parents were very much wanting reassurance that the pacing that's happening in Lincoln Learning is matching the pacing that's happening, uh, in Strongsville City Schools. Just making sure as a parent that I'm on track with my child. Uh, because the other part of it is whether it's at the semester or next year, when my child reintegrates into the school district, we wanna have a plan for that, and we wanna make sure they're successful whenever they re-enter, whether it be January or, or next fall. Um, another big theme that was there, and this was pervasive throughout all of them, is that there's a lack of connection between our students in the solo program and the school district. Uh, clearly, the majority feel that they are this separate entity that, uh, is not feeling a part of it. So, opportunities to, um, be a part of the district, uh, and specific communication to our solo community. Um, they did appreciate, some families expressed that, hey, when we reached out to the school district, whether it be, um, special education questions, or five oh four questions, or health, uh, that they were supportive. We, we met with families, they felt like they were, uh, always appreciated. And I think every group gave a shout-out to Erin over there about her wonderful communication skills and responsiveness, and were very appreciative, appreciative of, of her. Um, you know, they, they also, this wasn't a specific question, but they talked about, you know, why they didn't switch to Solo 2.0. They wanted consistency, and they wanted the flexibility. So they gave examples, hey, if Monday's a math day, we can do all math. They didn't wanna be locked into a schedule, or, or a time, or to being online. So, uh, they liked the consistency of, that they knew what was gonna happen for the whole semester or the year, and they liked that they had the flexibility in their schedules. Um, and then, you know, stu- what, what also was a theme through a lot of the programs is that students are building independent skills. You, you know, they're, they're becoming self-directed, they're taking advantage of flexibility in their learning. They can kinda map with guidance, and depending on the age, they can kinda map out their day. Uh, so they were saying that there's been some enhancements, uh, in their skills that way. So, that's K to five Lincoln Learning, some of the themes that we found. Uh, in terms of Solo 2.0, uh, it was clear based on the feedback, it must invol- it must evolve, and we must have more live instruction. Uh, you know, a lot of it also, there was a strong theme about that social emotional support. Being a part of the school, classroom, community, rapport, connection. Um, so, uh, you know, just a specific feedback point is, okay, if you have thirty minutes of live instruction a day, it doesn't afford the time for discussion, Q and A, getting to know one another. A couple of parents said, "I don't know, my child doesn't know any of the other kids in the class." And that's not what we want, so that's something we need to address. Um, you know, we need to provide greater consistency and structure for the kids, for the student day. Um, uh, and, and parents want students to be able to have periods of independence. So what that means is that they, there was, there was a division in the feedback we received from the Solo 2.0 families from, "I want a remote 2.0 experience, and I want a very structured scheduled day", to, um, "I want to have those periods where I don't have to be online. I don't want my child to be online looking at a computer screen all day." And so the idea of being locked into that structure is something that some parents were not, uh, interested in. Um, there was a theme of not enough work or complexity of work, and parents were feeling that they were having to supplement, that some of the work being given was busy work, uh, and that student feedback was lacking. Uh, there were some bright spots that were shared, but, uh, as a holistic, uh, theme, that more feedback, uh, needed to be given, whether it be formally or informally through discussions, questions, and answers. Um, they talked about, uh, you know, in that thirty-minute time period, there's still some disruptions to it. Not in terms of misbehavior, but where's the link? How do I find this? Uh, things that were taking away from the time and engagement of the live instruction. Uh, and then, you know, other feedback was the pre-recorded lessons and timing. Pre-recorded lessons are a part of the program, they're being given, uh, but there was some feedback at some grade levels. The pre-recorded lessons were happening after the, uh, assignments were given. So that, the timing issue was not lining up. Uh, but predominantly, teachers have been great. Uh, they're very appreciative of, of the teachers and the work they're doing, and, and consistently said, "Teachers are doing absolutely the best they can." Um, but here are the, the other themes, the, the negatives that are part of the program. In terms of the six to twelve Edgenuity, um, you know, one of the things in nine to twelve, uh, if you, and this is the, the feedback we've given to some of our families, and Erin has, that have reached out now, if you are a high school student, you start from the beginning. No matter when you start, uh, based on, these are semester classes. So in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, if you start in Edgenuity, you can take a pre-test. It can figure out how much you've learned, and it can place you in a relatively similar spot in the course. Uh, but with credit requirements, the NCAA clearinghouse, other things we have to make sure of, if students said, because we're now in person, "Hey, I wanna go to Solo", you go to the high school. We're telling you, the last quarter of instruction you took, you're gonna spend three quarters to get through one semester of instruction, because you're starting at day one in Edgenuity or Edmentum, and you're moving from there. So that's the challenge. Um, and they send you weekly emails. These emails, it was a clear theme, they're causing panic within our parents, uh, because it will say you're three weeks off. Um, you know, based on, at this date, uh, you know, on September fifteenth, you should be in lesson five. You're on lesson three, you're X amount of weeks off. So there's a, there's a lot of anxiety a- about being off pace, uh, as well as the number of hours, as it says in number six, to keep pace. You know, some of the families said, "Hey, if we're gonna keep pace, we're working through every break. We're working some weekends to, to get going." Uh, there was some feedback about some printing issues. Uh, they do provide guided notes, Erin. They do provide guided notes, so some of the families felt, and felt that it was best for their child's learning to print those guided notes, which are extensive. Um, so those were some of the concerns that were there. Uh, the tech issues are more of an access. So, in the platform, uh, they use Zoom as their platform. We've given some workarounds to that, uh, that have been successful. Uh, but it's, uh, a workaround, the Zoom, because of the securely and filtering system we have at, on our Chromebooks devices that are home. Uh, as well as in the platform, it'll be, you know, go to this link, check out this web- website. Um, and those may be blocked, uh, through our, uh, filter. Uh, Erin and Dave and the tech department have always whitelisted those and fixed those. But we're talking about, um, or we'll get to that in the solution. So we've got a, a, an area where we can problem-solve. Um, again, uh, these are not Strongsville City Schools' teachers. These are contracted teachers that are student learning advocates, as well as teachers. And predominantly, the feedback was very positive. They've been responsive, they've been helpful, uh, uh, you know, there were some outliers, but that was, that was the theme. Um, and as some folks may know, with some of our classes, with our AP honors classes, you know, some of our music classes, a part of that is, uh, live streaming. And so there was at least one father on there, uh, that said the live streaming of the AP class that we've piloted is, has been extremely successful. Um, so those are the themes that we learned through the focus groups. So what I'd like to talk about are next steps, first of all, for our current program offerings, because one of the things, uh, that we learned throughout this is just as there's a passion and energy that we need to do something different, there's also a passion and energy for, please don't change. Um, we have six hundred and fifty-ish families in the solo program, uh, and, uh, you know, we have not heard from the majority of them. Uh, we've probably heard through about eight to ten percent of them. Um, and, and so we need to be cognizant of the fact that although it may not be working from some, for some families, and some families that are extremely vocal about their dissatisfaction, it is working for others. Um, so we, we can't make global decisions. So, the first part of this is, what are we gonna do for the families that wanna stay in the pathway they're in now? And so for K to five Lincoln Learning, what we're looking at is providing our parents with curriculum pacing guides, so they can have that reassurance of, where should my child be at its second-grade math in November? Um, and they can have reassurance that they're on track. Um, we need to develop a clear re-integration plan, uh, so parents are clear. What's that gonna look like at the semester, or what's that gonna look like in the fall of next year? Um, the other thing that a lot of the parent groups talked about is, hey, if we can be the conduit to almost have a learning hub together, that, you know, we can build relationships with other people in the program that wanna do this, of getting our kids together virtually, or having other groups. Um, and so, you know, those are things that we're looking at, is how can we connect kids and families in the program? Um, because, y- you know, of hearing some of the stories, um, you know, depending on the age, the kids are isolated at home, and, and don't have that avenue for connection. So if we can do that with interested families, we'd be willing to do that. Um, also, how can we build connections between students in the solo program and our in-person, so they can still feel a part of their homeschool? Um, and so we're looking at, uh, we'll be developing opportunities for that. Uh, as well as, another very clear theme is, you know, our families still get the communications from the building, but what they're saying is, Cameron, it doesn't apply to us. Uh, it's not inclusive of us, um, and so we need to do a better job at that. So, um, one through five is, what will be the next steps as we look from now into the first semester, or second semester in January, of enhancements that we can make, uh, and implement to address some of those themes that were there? In terms of K to five Solo 2.0, for those families that would continue in that, how do we enhance the thirty minutes of, of daily instructional time? So we're looking at that program, the parameters would be the same. Uh, that, uh, for people that wanna continue, it'd be the thirty minutes of live instruction. Um, teachers that are assigned, current SES teachers to do that. But how can we make sure that we're not using that time to, to take attendance, or to get people where they need to be online? But how can we truly use that for, for high-quality live instruction, question-and-answer discussion? Um, again, some of the similar themes, conduit for the families in the program, connections, uh, between in-person and, and students in the solo program. Um, some parents have done this and found it very successful, but I think we need to do a better job of providing a sample schedule, a daily schedule, uh, at home for our K to five students. Um, some of our teachers in the Solo 2.0 are creating a, a daily or weekly checklist. Here's what you need to do today. Um, and that's received a lot of positive feedback. As we talked about, videos prior to instruction. Make sure when we're sending those videos, that it's prior to, um, uh, you know, the live instruction, so students can see that, or prior to student work being due, so they're, so they're not having to do that completely on their own. Um, we need to enhance the, the assigned work to ensure it's meaningful. We don't want it to be busy work. Uh, and so we're starting Katie and Erin's work. We are seeing significant improvements in this area. It's not where it needs to be yet, uh, but making sure that it's meaningful work, um, as well as, as solidifying expe- we need to be better, uh, administratively. What are our expectations for feedback on student work to teachers? Um, curriculum and pacing guides similar to, as we talked about with K to five, uh, for our parents. Um, and, uh, you know, eight, we talked about, same as K to five. But explore encore opportunities. There were some, um, you know, encore's art, music, and physical education. So, there were some suggestions of, of, hey, even if we can get just the videos of what the art teachers are doing, so we can recreate that home, or music, or PE. Not necessarily that we need to have live instruction with a encore teacher, but if there's resources that you could provide, that would be great. And so we're working on that. Um, for six to twelve, uh, you know, Chromebook waiver, so what that, that goes and addresses our tech issue. So instead of kids getting stuck, not being able to go to a site that's been linked through Lincoln, or Edgenuity or Edmentum, uh, we did this recently with our students that are in College Credit Plus in Polaris. Uh, we sent a waiver to those families, saying, "If you sign this, you understand that the device no longer off-property, no longer has the filtering system. Uh, when it's on-property, it always does." Uh, but that's an option for interested families. They don't have to worry about the workaround for Zoom. They don't have to worry about, "Oh, I can't get to this website that..." And, and, uh, you know, they can have that ready to go. Um, we did have, uh, a, a family, uh, you know, that had a negative experience with, uh, they're assigned teacher through the program. So we need to work on, how do we help support families that are not seeing that relationship, uh, like, uh, and the positive experience like the other students are? Um, and then again, including, uh, solo students in the building communications event, so they feel a part of our district. As we've said a lot, uh, you know, we're all one community, we're all one school district. We just happen to learn in different locations, and we need to make sure that we continue to have that mindset and approach, uh, and fulfill that with our actions versus just our words. So the last thing that I wanna share, uh, is, uh, for those families, K to five and six to twelve, that are saying, "Hey, the current program offerings are not working." Um, and this is where, uh, we would look to have a new virtual program. And, um, I'm gonna s- I'm not gonna share specifics at this point, uh, other than what I have written, uh, because there are a lot of moving parts that I need to make sure can work prior to announcing what it is. Uh, but I hope to do that soon, and I'll share kind of what we've been doing already. So, what, we are planning, by the start of the second trimester, for K to five families that would like to switch, uh, that we would provide a new virtual learning program that would increase live instruction, increase, uh, discussion and Q and A. It would provide SEL, meaning social emotional learning. It would provide, um, opportunities for social emotional learning, connections, morning meetings. It would provide encore instruction, so art, music, PE. It would inclu- be inclusive of meaningful teacher feedback. There would be a clear structure and schedule for the student day. Uh, we did have a lot of kindergarten parents on the calls, and, uh, they were concerned about too much, you know? Um, and so one of the things that will be a part of this plan is there will be an option for families to do a half-day experience, or a, a full-day experience. Um, so what we've done so far, uh, you know, so, so that's kind of the big-picture concept of what we're going to look to implement, um, and communicate as, as soon as we're, we're able to. Um, but what we've been doing is we have, uh, an informational flyer, uh, developed describing the specifics of the program. Uh, we're finishing up a promotional video, uh, to be able to show, uh, parents exactly what this is going to, to look like in practice, uh, to visualize that. Um, and then we are taking care of, looking at what is the staffing necessary, uh, to, to make this vision a reality. Um, and so that work is happening, uh, next week. Uh, you know, the video and the promotional flyer, those are all, uh, drafts are done, and they're being wrapped up. Uh, but in terms of our work on the staffing component, that will happen, uh, next week, so hopefully shortly thereafter. Um, once we're able to solidify that, okay, we can make this vision a reality, uh, then we'll, we'll share it publicly. And what that would look like is promotional flyer, promotional video, sharing what it looks like, giving our families an opportunity that are currently in the solo program to move. Uh, and then we would talk about, there would be new guidelines, um, such as, no more movement after this. Um, once we move, we need commitment for the rest of the year. So things of that na- nature will be detailed in the, in the communications. Um, and, uh, you know, we'll move forward w- with that. So this will be an opportunity for students in Solo 2.0 and, uh, Lincoln Learning. Um, one of the things, uh, that we would look at is, right now, K to five Lincoln Learning, they're scheduled to finish at the semester time. Uh, Erin and I will have some further conversations about, is, is it best for interested K to five Lincoln Learning students to move, uh, at the trimester as well? So we'll finalize that. Um, in terms of the new options for grades six to twelve, uh, what we- what we will be addressing is increased access to recorded and live instruction, more discussion time, more Q and A. That's really what they asked for. That's, it, it seems simple that it's one bullet point, but for those of you that were on the call, that's what they wanted. And we think that we're going to be able to provide that. Again, I've got meetings scheduled next week with staff to talk about, you know, the, the possibilities of how this could work and, and look. So, you know, I understand that there's a desire to what specifically is it? But I just ask for people's patience as we want to make sure that we're able to fulfill our obligations of what we say we're going to do. But I can say on behalf of Aaron and Jenny and Dan and I and some of the staff that we brainstormed this work with, that we feel we've got a, a good option, not just for this year, but a good solid option that could be utilized as a, as a platform for learning at home moving forward. So I don't think I breathed for the last thirty minutes. But any questions or clarifications or further details that I can provide for the board?
So for those of us who are calendar challenged, second trimester would be what date?
November sixteenth.
And the K to twelve?
Is January fourth.
Questions?
You mentioned in K to five, there is a, a need for feeling more part of the community and, and school district and everything. And I think it was maybe the slide before this or one before that. I can't, sorry, it's hard to read from here, but is that also true for six to twelve? Are you guys trying to implement the, the families into that and any resources that are available at the, you know, kind of six to twelve level as well that they can have access to? Even if they're in a, in Ingenuity or Edmentum?
Yeah. So there, there is a need for them to, one of the things is, is a need for them to feel a part of the building, to feel a part of our district. There was less of a need, and I'm going to look to Aaron and Jenny to confirm, there was a less of a need of, hey, can you be the conduit for us to get together and form kind of a, you know, a, a solo group? There was, there was not, and I'm, I'm, my, my assumption is that's based on the age. They have a social network where some of our youngest learners, you know, there was a lot of folks on the call that were brand new to the district. And, and so their students didn't have that connection and the parents did not have that network yet. So a lot of willing parents to help support one another as, as, you know, just kind of like their own building community moving forward, but not, not, and not as strong in terms of that at the secondary level.
And you talk about the, the resources. Is this something that no matter, as long as they're a student of Strongsville, no matter what platform they're on will have access to? From regards of, you know, videos and content and just kind of places they could, I guess the hub that will hold all this?
Say that again for me Seth, I'm sorry.
As, as far as the, the resource you talk about, the videos that are there, links to help support what, you know, teacher doing, whether it be in person or, or online. Is this something that all students, as long as they're a Strongsville student will have access to? It's almost like a central hub they can go to and, and get those resources?
So we're still working through the details. Right now, it would be accessible. So when you look at Google Classroom, which would likely be the hub, you have to have a code to, to get into that Google Classroom. And so, you know, for example, if I'm a third grade student at Kinzner, I would have access to all resources, third grade at Kinzner. Based on, and, and I'll defer to Jenny or Aaron, if you have any other insight, because you're, you have more knowledge in terms of what the specifics that were worked on. I believe they were going to keep it at the grade level in the building. Is that accurate? Oh, grade level overall, okay.
As long as they have a Strongsville email address, which all students do, likely they would have access, whether they were solo, whether they were the new, whatever the new virtual program is. Okay.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick comments or notes that I took. The, the six to twelve, I think we heard clearly that we wanted to increase access, whether it's live and pre-recorded. I mean, they just want more resources and more ability. You know, it's good to have a deadline, January fourth, but some of those things, I don't think we need to wait till January fourth. And I'm sure we'll be able to work and deliver those things sooner. And one of the themes that I saw was a, a little bit of a balance between lots of little things that we can do to improve, whether it be the access, the, the messaging, things like that. That I think, you know, as, as we can offer those, we can offer them. I had a reaction to the promo and the, the video. And what I wanted to just share is that it's not, it's not meant to be a marketing tool as much as it is. I think one of the things that we can do better is make sure parents are making informed decisions. And so taking that time upfront to say, this is what we're, what the, the, I won't call it new solo. This is what the, the next improvement is. We want to make sure, the next virtual improvement is, we want to make sure that people are, are understanding it. You know, we've, we have had a lot of concerns that, you know, it was, whether, whether it was done maliciously or not, it wasn't. But I think that's going to go a long way to make sure that parents understand, because we are not going to be able to satisfy every specific request. We're going to do the best we can to address them. We've, we've heard loud and, and clear and we agree that we want to improve what I call the, you know, just the simple, we have a pitcher of water that's education and how much are we pouring it? And the more we, you know, the more we can pour, the, the better all of our students will be. So we need to work through some of those details and candidly, there, you know, it's making sure we have bodies in place. The last thing we want to do is say we have this nice shiny thing and it's a great plan and it addresses everybody and everybody's going to be happy. And then the reality is, is we need more time to find bodies or place, et cetera. I think all of us can understand that challenge. I know at work. I mean, we have, we have the same challenges as, as just trying to find people that can do the job, that have the credential, that have the certificate. So we want to make sure we put in the time ahead to make it as successful as possible. But it would be remiss on my part not to thank the right people for all the hard work. There was a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of taking the time to pause and, and evaluate what we're doing and how can we make it better? I don't want perfect to be the enemy of better. And I think that's, that's a theme that we're going to be dealing with during the pandemic for a while. We're not in a position to fix things with a snap of a finger, but we are in a position to work together and make things better. And I'm excited about the progress we're making. So thank you.
And just to kind of conclude on this, when I, when I come back to the board and share the final plan, what I'll be asking is for the support of the board that this is it. That we, we have listened, we have taken the feedback, but here's the reality after going through these focus groups. We are still not going to make everybody happy. There are still going to be things that people want that we're not offering. But in the best interest of moving forward, that in my opinion, there needs to be a clear declaration that for the rest of this school year, this is what we're offering. And this is what we're going to be able to implement. And then we look at what's a sustainable program as we move into future years, because I don't see the need for a high quality program for our students that are not attending school to go away. But, you know, I think we're going to provide, we're going to evolve and provide the best opportunities we can for students. But we need to give these opportunities a chance. And for this, for the stability of our students, for the stability of our staff, we need to live with these for the next semester and then grow in the following school year. So.
So actually one, one other thing.
Oh, sure.
You talk about the, you know, the offerings that are there and obviously the potential of us having to move into whether it be in-person or remote or hybrid and those different levels that we obviously are discussing as well. Can you talk about how this, how what is, is being kind of shared, how here now will be flexible and, and, and help in those situations as well? Sorry. As we, as we need to move through
Yeah.
the different learning situations of either in-person, remote or hybrid. And the resources that, and, and the solutions that we're coming up with now, how that will help as we're in those different levels.
Got you now.
Thank you.
So yeah, as we, as we take a look at, we're building systems. We're building systems to be able to provide a high quality education, no matter where the students are at. So the things that we learn and the things that we're able to implement and evolve are going to help all students. They're going to help students whether they're in quarantine. They're going to help students whether there's just a traditional absence, whether they're in our, our virtual program or whether they're, it's a, it's a green day and they're at home and trying to learn in a, in a blended structure. So as we build this, that's what we want to look at. What's a system that can be over, all encompassing to help support students? And also what that does is that helps streamline our focus as educators. That we're not saying, okay, I gotta do this for students that are quarantined. I gotta do this for students that are virtual learning. I gotta do this for my students that are in the hybrid. I gotta do this for the students that are in person with me. That becomes overwhelming and, and challenging to, to master. So that's, that, we believe that this can help address those issues as well.
So you talked about in the future, is our goal to get rid of or not? Solo, solo two, all the other pro, Edmentum, Apex, is that our goal to just have this one program?
So for this year, it's my recommendation that we keep all of these just for the, the families. I would like to see where we are at, at the end of this year. But I, I believe that what we're suggesting could replace long-term all of these other opportunities.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, the last thing that I wanted to share with the board is looping back on our Friday discussion and the responsible restart plan. So I want to focus on two areas, which is the one week notice and the two week time period. So our current plan says that unless immediate action needs to be taken, one week notice will be given to parents prior to moving to a different learning framework. And the district will remain in that learning framework for a minimum of two week, of a two week period. So what I want to detail for you is my recommendations to give clarity to this aspect of the plan moving forward. So let's talk about the one week notice. The intent of the one week notice is a courtesy. It's a courtesy for all of our families that they can prepare to give more time for childcare needs. So especially if we were going from an all-in model to blended or to complete remote, we wanted to give time for that as well as time for our staff to prepare for movement to a, a new learning framework. So please, I, I, I know the board understands, but I'd ask the community to, to also understand that these are three very different ways to educate and operate, and there's a learning curve for each of those. You know, the problems that we were working to improve upon in blended are different than the problems we're working on to improve in in-person as they were remote. So, you know, with that, it's a courtesy. We would like to get it, give a one week notice. But moving forward, I, I would recommend that the one week notice not be a, a mainstay of our plan. And it would be at my discretion to give that one week notice, but it's not required. So as an example, if, if Thursday, so today, if it would have been yellow or orange or purple, I would have said, hey, we're not going to give a one week notice. We're either moving all the kids back on Monday or we're going to complete remote on Monday is just an example. And, and then I also put in the note there of if I choose to give a one week notice or hey, start thinking about it, looks like the data is trending this way, that the Thursday release of data would supersede any notice. So summation, notice is a nice thing. It's a courtesy, but it's not a decision point. The, the, my decision will be the decision point and the, the county risk level will be the factor of that. The second week, or the second thing is the two week minimum per learning framework. That's the goal. We want stability for our students. We don't want for our students and our families, we don't, and our staff. We don't want them one week in, the next week out. So we want to provide that consistency and stability. But this goes to qualify, what is that unless immediate attention is needed? So to me, as an example, the immediate attention is we're purple. If we would have turned purple this Thursday, we would have only been all in for one week. It would have been my plan to move forward and go to remote learning on Monday. So that's an example where, hey, we want to stay consistent. We want to give our kids stability. But when certain conditions are there, however long we've been in the learning framework is no longer applicable. And again, even if notice is given and it's been the two weeks or not the two weeks, again, the, the note that the, the county color risk level would supersede. So how does that relate to our current metrics that have been publicized and shared? It doesn't change what I'm recommending for yellow, orange and purple. This is the same graphic. The only thing that's different is the note at the bottom, which takes out that one week notice and two week minimum. Because I'm recommending that I have the discretion to make those decisions. So this would state that level one, or level one, yellow, level two, orange would be all in. Kids would be there. And, and whether there's a one week notice or not, or whether they've been in it for two weeks prior or not, some else, that this would be what we follow. And then for purple, we would be completely remote. The only note that's still in this one is again, if we cannot find substitutes or we have to quarantine classrooms, those are the caveats to this. Questions on this one before I move on?
It is what you're saying now, I guess I kind of interpret that as what this is here. Because you say unless immediate action needs to be taken, and that's what you're saying. You're just saying, just take it off.
I'm just saying, just take it off because it's, it's, it's causing more challenges in understanding it and interpreting what unless immediate action needs to take place. What I'm saying is as superintendent, I would like the authority to determine, do we need to give a notice or do I need to take immediate action? And, and so let's, let's avoid that talking point and let's avoid that, that reference by saying it's our goal, but we're not going to be bound by that. That's the intent. So the structure of how we'd operate in the learning framework is unchanged. So going to red, I'm, I'm providing two options to the board and I'm going to share which one I'm recommending. And then there's a third one that the board can discuss if you so choose. So same idea here. This chart is a, this is the same chart that's been publicized. It's in our responsible restart guide. I've simply taken off the one week notice and the, you know, two week minimum. And so this is the plan that's currently there. So this is option one, is that we would have consensus that we're going to follow the, the same learning framework decision protocol we approved, giving me the authority to not have to be constrained by the one week notice and two week minimum. Option two reflects the board vote from Friday. So option two says, on Friday, when the board met, we would, we were in the lane of delivery option one. Cuyahoga County was red. The other two counties were orange. And so based on the vote, the vote was for in-person in-building learning. So the graphic has been updated. It's the same graphic. I just eliminated this row right here because it no longer was relevant. So it's for pre-K to twelve. If Cuyahoga County is in red, like it was this past week, we would be all in pre-K to twelve based on the board's vote. Delivery option two remains the same, which is that it would be blended learning. However, there's a note there that this would give me the authority that if I felt it was safe for our youngest learners, K to two, to still attend school, that I could do that. And then level, if all the surrounding counties and Cuyahoga were red, we would implement remote learning. So this is the chart that I'm recommending to the board that we follow, based on the board vote on Friday. So let me wrap up my whole recommendation. My recommendation is that we follow the existing chart, this one for yellow, orange and purple. That we follow this updated chart based on your board vote for red. You give me the authority to, you know, deal with the notices and how long we're in that, that protocol. And then the other part that I wanted to share is I understand and know that today, Lorain County went red. However, I feel it's important to give stability to our students. So it's also my recommendation that we honor for this, my recommendation is we honor that two week window. And as I said in my parent email on my, on Monday, that November second would be the first opportunity that we would look at a different learning framework. So on Thursday, October twenty ninth, So, on Thursday, October 29th, whatever that rating is, we would follow this graphic. So, if it's the same rating on November 2nd, we would go to blended learning. If it's a different color or a different combination thereof, we would, whatever the graphic says. So, that's my recommendation to the board for consideration. The other option, based on Friday's discussion, is if the board so chooses that red will be the domain of the board to decide based on more factors than just county COVID data, that's an option that you can exercise. I think we have consensus on yellow, orange, and purple. So, Mr. Miko, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Cameron. Thank you, Dr. Reba. So, let's start by saying, I do think, not just as a board, but as a entire team. And that, that team is not just us and the admin team, but I think it's reasonable that it's the, the principals and the leaders and the teachers, et cetera. But I don't think anyone is strongly in disagreement with our plan for yellow, orange, or purple. And I will say that it looks like we're going to be purple. What I am, what I am constantly weighing is that, that middle ground. And what I've learned is that we had a really lot of time, we put it in, trying to come up with a framework that we can follow and, and just let, let the cards play themselves out. And then, the pandemic doesn't bother to read our framework. And so, for example, when we, when we had the previous week, we went through all of the data, and we grappled with it, and I thought it was healthy that the conversation we had at the, at the prior board meeting, because it's, it is not clear. There are people out there who it's very clear for that we should do one thing, there are people out there that it's very clear for that we should do other things, but it is not clear. What is clear is we are balancing a lot of things that cannot be balanced. If it was very simple to predict that the pandemic would be over in a small period of time, we could choose to batten down the hatches and, you know, wait it out. That is not clear to me, I don't think it's clear to anyone. I listened, like I do almost every opportunity I can, I listened to the governor very closely, and the governor went through all of the data. And then he spent quite a bit of time, and I don't know how well it was covered, because it was later in the press conference, but he spent quite a bit of time discussing the real challenges with continuing to push off education. He talked about the real challenges of, for, for many students, that remote learning is not effective, that hybrid learning is not effective. And he talked about how this is a local control decision, and he is not in any, in any rush to make statewide decisions the way he did when the pandemic first started. So, while I appreciate everyone's opinion, and I think everyone's opinion is reasonable and insightful, but it's, it's that person's opinion of facts that I don't, I don't know if, how well anyone has grasped of them. But we've spent a lot of time in our personal lives and our professional lives balancing that. And so, the one way to describe that issue was, you know, it would have been very easy to just say, our framework is this, so we're going to follow that, but the reality of it was, is it wasn't that simple. And one of the, one of the issues that I keep on coming back to, and it keeps on getting highlighted, within the schools, we do not seem to be a super-spreader. We do not seem to have rampant spread. And that's true not just in Strongsville, but that's true not just in the United States, that is true worldwide. And I, I didn't share it last time, because I don't know how, how helpful it is, but I have the study, I've read the study. In Germany, they went back to school much sooner than we did, and their prediction was that it would be mild or a small amount, and in fact, the COVID spread went down. Yesterday, or this morning, the school, the National School Board Association sent out in their update that there's research in the United States that by and far, schools, while they were predicted to be super-spreaders, are not. There are a host of reasons. I'm not a scientist, I don't know with authenticity or with, with specific, but I think it's, one of the things that I think is happening, and I think is true in Strongsville, is that in general, we are doing a, a very good job at mitigating COVID, at mitigating the risk for becoming infected with COVID. Are we perfect? No. You can all go on social media and find the pictures where we could do better. But we are doing better, and I want to thank Principal Wengler, and I want to thank Principal Boitam for all the hard work they've done, and they're going to bed later every night, and they're getting up earlier every morning, and they're addressing the concerns. I want to thank the students. They have done what they've been asked. They've put on the masks. I, I remember when we were going round and round whether students would wear masks and whether they would wear them well. They have by and far done that. Can they improve? Sure they can. Will they improve? I certainly hope they will. They have done the, the physical or social distancing, yes, they can improve that, yes, some of it is. We need to, we need to figure out better ways to time things and do those kinds of things so that our hallways aren't as busy as they were, but we'll do that. But it is not as simple as we should just batten down the hatches. It is not as simple as we should just ignore all the, all the recommendations and just let kids go back to school. And so, one of the things that Cameron and I talked about is that I think, at least for the short term, our best interest is to continue to apply our judgment whenever we're in these middle-ground scenarios. I appreciate that Cameron wants the authority, and I appreciate that he wants to take some of the, the weight off of us as a board, but I think that's why we're elected, I think that's why we're here, and I look at it as a shared responsibility between the board, the administration, and the entire community. So, that's kind of where I'm at with this. I open it up for discussion with my other board members.
What did you say?
Option two, I think we leave as, as, you know, and again, we can go on and on, it is currently 8:35, but, you know, blended learning has a lot of challenges. And the time we spent in blended learning, we spent a long time in blended learning, and we learned about how hard it is to teach effectively blended. It's almost, and, you know, again, I don't have answers, but it almost feels in some instances where remote learning would be more effective than blended learning. But we need to work through those issues as a team and apply judgment on when, when to switch to different, different locales. For now, I, I will support Cameron's decision to stay for one more week. If the governor is correct, we're going to be purple next week, at which point, we will go to Remote Learning 2.0.
Well, so when we make our decisions, are we going to have, you're saying based on data, or what metrics would we use? Like, are we going to still look at data from Strongsville and say, use the positivity rates and the per 100,000 rates and stuff like that? So, apply the same metrics that they use for the county to Strongsville, the data that we use for Strongsville? Is that what you're thinking?
Correct, but I'm, I'm thinking for the, for now, the next month or so, if we need to come together as a board, we'll call that meeting, we'll come together as a board, we'll get the data, and we'll make a decision.
So, just to summarize for my clarity, so I know, based on what you're proposing, what I have, what's in my authority and what's in the board's authority, what you're suggesting is since there's, since there's clear consensus on what yellow, orange, and purple mean, that on Thursday, if it's yellow, orange, and purple, I have the authority to enact our decision framework and determine what notice is given or not given. In red, it would be the decision of the board.
You have summarized my, my instincts very well. Now, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm opening this up for discussion, there's, there's arguments for any situation, but right now, you know, again, the governor spoke at length about how the issue with COVID spread right now is individual community members acting in ways that are spreading COVID, and they're not affecting our, our schools, and they're not affecting Strongsville. I tried to get Strongsville's numbers, I tried to get the county numbers, they won't release them till tomorrow, and they wouldn't, the gentleman's very nice, but he wouldn't give me the data early. But that's where, where we're at. And, like, like I said, nobody on this board, nobody in the administration, nobody in the school district wants to put children in an unsafe situation. Nobody wants to continue to not do the best we can to give as much teaching and education to our students as possible. There is, what I think, reasonable disagreement on where that leads us to. Mine is one opinion, but I think, again, the reason we have five people is so that we can work through those opinions and then ultimately make decisions. And for, you know, for now, I don't want, I, I have some other comments about the governor, but I think we need to wrap this up, and I don't want to veer off into a lot of other comments before we close this discussion. So, I appreciate your comments. This is a board meeting, we're here for the meeting, the business of the board. It's not a dialogue right now.
I'm, I'm having a hard time with this. One, because I think the, the rate that's, is increasing or decreasing needs to be considered in, in the red scenario. I mean, again, yellow, orange, purple, very, pretty clear-cut, in my, in my opinion. That was what my biggest concern was last Friday, was the, the rate that, that was increasing, which is the reason I voted the way I did. I'm having a hard time grappling with the fact of keeping the kids in school for another week, especially being that we're going to be moving more than likely, hopefully don't, but more than likely moving to purple. For two reasons, one, I think that's not actually in the best interest of the health of the students, but also from a, moving around to three different learning scenarios in three different weeks, that also is not healthy. So, I'm having a very hard time balancing that as well. I would like to be involved in the decision-making to the red level, so I agree with the, as far as the board being involved in that process. But to me, the, the rate of it is, is a very, very big one. And the fact that we have the framework in front of us as a, something that is a guide to go off of, and we're in option delivery two right now, but then also going to consider staying with essentially delivery one option for another week, and then, and then more likely going to have to jump to option three, I just, I'm having a really hard time with that.
Well, I'm still back on the, having the board make the decision, because I thought this framework was helpful to the parents, too. So, they know by just looking at this, they can listen to the governor and say, okay, this is where we would be based on the, you know, the colors or, or metrics and stuff. But I guess if we said, we would look at these metrics, if we can, you know, assuming that we have access to, like, Seth was just talking about the, what, the R number? The rate, if we can have all those numbers, which I'm not sure that we do, the rate, the positivity, the per 1,000, all those metrics that the State of Ohio use, and apply those to our Strongsville numbers, then I guess I would say, okay, you know, we take over. But parents wouldn't know from, I guess, from changing color to changing color. They would have to wait for the board, I guess, to say, okay, let's see what we're going to do this week. What are we going to decide, or what the vote is going to be every, you know, it wouldn't change all the time. Hopefully, we'll go back down to yellow. But when we're in red, every week the parents will have to think, okay, what are we going to do, or, you know, what the board is going to think. So, I thought this gave them some guideline to follow, so they would know from week to week where we're going to be. That's why I like that.
And, and I don't disagree, I like it too, if it, if only the virus would follow the rules.
I mean, the governor did encourage districts to look in, within their own city, at their own numbers, look at their zip codes. And I think that's what we've, we've been doing. I think that's what we need to continue doing.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, if we, if we have that data and we look at those numbers and we use the same numbers that the State of Ohio is using, and follow something, that would be fine. But I'm not sure if we're saying, well, we're going to say each week. I know we're in delivery option two, where we have blended learning here, but we're going to go all-in. You know, or, I know we're in delivery option three, per this, but we're going to go all-in because of whatever.
I honestly don't think it would be like that.
Yeah, I hope, I hope not. That's what I'm thinking, if we use the numbers, if we had data. So, but do we have access to data like the State of Ohio?
We'll have the access tomorrow.
Okay.
Like I said, I was hoping to have the access early today, but we'll have the access tomorrow.
I'd just like to assert a practical concept to the, to the thought that's going on, is that if we're looking at adding more data to the decision framework for red, and that data's not available on Friday, and we want parents to, we're going to implement in Monday, I would just ask that the board would consider, what is the practical implement, implementation of a plan that's relying on data that's not going to be released till Friday at 2:00?
I have a couple of things I wanted to share, and one of them is this. We talk about health of our students a lot, it is, it is the number one, you know, word in my emails. If I highlight it and count it, that's the word that comes up. And I, I struggle because I think we often use that term in a limited sense. We have to consider every aspect of a student's health, and I think considering their mental and emotional health is, often gets left out of this discussion. And so, I'm just asking that as you're thinking about health, that you also think about those pieces, and not just for our students, but for our parents. So, practical ramification of that, is it hard on parents to flip-flop every Thursday, to not know what's coming? Absolutely. We have to recognize that that is challenging to our mental health. It's not challenging to our physical health necessarily, but it is challenging to our mental health. So, there are a lot of, same, same is true for students, really, if they're going to, this is why I challenge the remote day. If I send my six-year-old to school four days, and all of a sudden on Friday, he has to have a remote day, that is a challenge. It is, it is a challenge to him emotionally and mentally to make that switch all the time. So, I'm just asking that when we talk about health, we, we keep a broader perspective in mind. And we have, that's our job here, is to balance the mental, emotional health of our students with the actual, physical health of our students. And I think if we ignore one or the other, we do a disservice to everyone. And so, that's, and we've asked Cameron, I know several of us have asked this week, where's the, I know you've called the Health Department, Rich, and asked, where is the data that supports, what, what's happening to our students, to our families' mental health? We don't have color codes, the way, and I'd love, I'd love it if we had two tables, right? These are the physical health risks, these are emotional health risks. We don't have that, but we have to, we have to take that into consideration. We have to take into consideration all of the, the mental health practitioners that I know, neighbors, friends, family members, they have waitlists months, months long. You know, I've listened to podcasts of local people who say the risks of eating disorders have increased dramatically during this time period due to a number of risk factors. These are things that I think we have to take into account. We have increased suicides, I have police officer from in Broadview Heights who's seen more suicides off of I have police officer front in Broadview Heights who's seen more suicides off a particular bridge this year, including youth, than they've ever had, ever. These are real things, anecdotally sure, but I don't have anything else right now to tell you. So when we sit here as a board, I think that's what we're, we're tossing around. We're tossing around what happens, what is the risk level of, of a disease that we don't know a lot about? And what is the risk level of some other diseases we do know a lot about? And, and how do we balance those and make a decision that is suitable for the, the greatest majority of students while providing other options for families? So I wanted to share that and invite you to take a bigger, you know, definition of health and also to let you know how seriously that, that I do and we as a board take this. We spend hours and hours reading your emails and under, you know, trying to understand and sort through the perspectives of the community. For every medical professional that comes and tells me that we have to pull back, that we can't expose our children, we have another one who says we absolutely have to go. So it, everything we're working in here is, is gray. There is no optimal solution. And I think that's why we found that the charts fail. We are working in gray. There's no red, there's no orange, there's no purple. Everything is gray. And we are doing the best that we possibly can do to sort through all of that gray. So on one hand, I like the idea of a chart. I'm a chart person. I like my life to be orderly and organized. I like to know what I'm going to eat for breakfast, lunch, and dinner tomorrow. This is, this is how I operate, right? But I don't think that the virus gives us that luxury. I think everything is changing all the time. I think, you know, we have data right now that says our students are doing just fine in the elementary school. But by this chart, we'd have to pull them next week, right? So I struggle, like, we know we've had zero case of spread within our buildings, zero. There has been no student infected in a school building, to my knowledge, as of today. We've had only a handful of cases total in the building. Like, so I'm wrestling with, yes, the data is, these are charts, these are data. We know that our numbers are going up. However, we also know that we've had success. So what, what do I do with those two things? And the best thing I know to do right now is to relook at our data every week. Are our numbers skyrocketing? Are we seeing student infections? Are we seeing our quarantines off the chart that we can't keep up with those students at home? The best thing that I know to do right now is to a, address it every week. I, you know, I know you guys don't want to be here every Thursday. I don't want to be here every Thursday, but I think right now that's what this job demands.
So are you saying we should look at some data, like the data you talked about infection rate?
Well, of course, I want to look at data. I just don't want a chart to limit the decision that we make in red.
And if I could add, I had the, I was fortunate enough to go and visit the middle school yesterday. I spent lunch periods there. I walked all the floors. I don't know that we give our kids enough credit. I mean, those kids are following the rules. They're wearing their masks, they're washing their hands, they're staying far apart. The high school today, I was there for over two hours. I witnessed the fifth-period lunch, which is the busiest lunch, and the sixth-period lunch. And then I walked the halls, I popped into classrooms. The kids at lunch are sitting three to a table. The overflow is going back to the auxiliary gym where they have longer tables where they can sit four. The kids seemed happy. It almost reminded me of pre-COVID times. I've been fortunate that I've been able to volunteer in our buildings for the past 15 years. It was so good to see those kids. They were talking, they were chatting. Our aides were, you know, in the auditorium where they were having study hall, they were sitting three chairs apart. I think we need to give our kids credit that they're following the rules.
So, and I'll piggyback off of that comment, Laura, and I've talked about it before. I work in an essential, in an essential industry. So not only we, we are able to, we are not just able to continue working, we are required to continue working. And I look at our schools and apply that. And if we can do it safely, and so far I think we are, then we do need to continue to look at and judge whether being in that essential industry and having our students learning in whatever mode it is, is, is where we're at. So I don't think we're going to answer any questions permanently today. But Cameron does need direction for next week. And is everyone comfortable allowing him to follow his recommendation that we stay for one more week in person? And then we will revisit it. And like I said, my prediction is, is we'll be purple next week, in which case we will be implementing remote 2.0. And candidly, that'll, that, that is going to be another jolt for the, for everyone, families, students, and teachers. And it'll allow us that week to prepare for that.
No.
Seth, would you prefer a vote?
We don't need to vote. I think, I know where we all stand. I just, I'm not in favor of, um, I think we need to go back to blended learning for next week.
Well, like I said, I like the charts. But we're in purple now though, right?
We are not.
I mean, the numbers say we're in purple, but
Correct.
The numbers say we're in purple. But we need two weeks in purple before the governor will
Correct.
color us purple. So well, I think we should do a remote too, but, um, I guess I was under the guise of the two-week plan that we had talked about last week, so.
We're, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest we do vote because I, I think it's important for our, for our minutes and for the community. So, um, I'm allowed to make a motion, correct, as president?
Yeah.
Okay, so I make a motion that we follow the superintendent's recommendation and we stay in-person learning for the next week. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any further discussion?
And others that have not been spread within the schools, and I'm very thankful for that. Obviously, the, the risk level for elementary is, is students are very limited. It grows as the, as the students get older. I think it's great that all the students are following the protocols. I, I also feel, and the data supports, that a lot of those students and people in general are not symptomatic. And so while there isn't spread within the schools, and apparently it's all happening outside the schools, it's, it still can come to the schools where the students are asymptomatic and taking that home to people that are at risk. That's a, a concern for me.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Onagostu.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
No.
And the motion passes three to two.
So just as a point of clarity, how do you want to structure, we never know what the color is going to be on Thursday. We have meeting notification rules that we have to follow. So how do you want to go about, what is the direction to George in terms of scheduling meetings to address the fact that, as far as I understand it, I don't know if you want to, how you want to do, the board is taking over red?
If that's the way we're going to phrase it, but I mean, for, for now, the, the board will weigh in when we're in red. And that means we'll have a meeting next Thursday.
So, just to clarify, next Thursday, meeting, six thirty or seven?
Special meeting.
Special meeting, um, six thirty, seven?
I would just remain, have it remain at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
That's my recommendation unless. Okay.
And again, to continue to, to be the annoying person that asks the questions, but if on Thursday we're purple, are we canceling the meeting?
I don't, I don't need a meeting if we're purple.
So we're back to the idea that we're only, on the off-
Judgment occurs on red.
On red. So off meetings, we will schedule and hold those meetings if that Thursday announcement is red. If it's yellow, orange, or purple, then we will cancel those off meetings and I will move forward with the decision accordingly.
Yes. Does everyone agree?
Okay. I'm done with my slides now at nine, nine PM. That's, I'm good, I'm good. All right, I, I do have one other, Mr. Miko, okay to move on to the next item?
A, a different topic or s, more?
No, different topic.
I'd like to wrap up this-
Yes, I, I'm ready to move to number two in my agenda.
I, I actually would like to continue the discussion on the restart plan. I just have a few comments. The governor today discussed the, again, spent quite a bit of time the quandary schools are in as far as in-person learning and, uh, remote learning. And he talked about, uh, the federal government sent out a, a supply of rapid tests. And originally he was going to, or not only, but originally his plan talked about using them in long-term care facilities and colleges. But he talked today about, uh, using them in schools and wanting a pilot program. And so I wanted to bring this to the attention of the board and the administration, and I would like to follow up with the governor and take him up on the offer and have Strongsville be part of that pilot program. The way he described it was that these tests would be voluntary. And I understand parents having concerns about the tests. There would be no forced testing of any students, it would be voluntary. But, uh, and I, I've talked about this with Cameron and others. I think we need to have discussion about alternate plans that if the COVID, if the COVID pandemic, if the virus continues and we don't have a, a vaccine, how are we going to continue to mitigate that? And being able to test students, especially as, as an example, we had eighty-six some odd students in quarantine. And it's a fourteen-day quarantine because those are the numbers. And if you get past fourteen, we think you're, you're safe. Well, if we could have some testing prior to that and students or, or adults or whoever tested negative, we then can bring them safely back and we can do a better job of finding out where infection occurs and react to it. So unless there's a discussion, I'd like to work with Cameron to let the governor know that Strongsville is interested in being part of that program. But I think if, like I said, I think it would give us another tool in our belt to help control and mitigate the virus.
Do we know who actually administers the tests?
I, I do not know any of that. It, the, the tests are rapid tests. And so I don't know, some of them are saliva tests, some of them are using a, a cotton swab. All of these tests, I've been told, are not the, the painful test in the nasal cavity. That I don't, you know, that, that would be a concern if, if it was that test. But these are all rapid tests and I, you know, contact tracing is very important to helping us, uh, deal with the virus. And I, again, it, I don't think this is obligating us, but I think if there's consensus, I think it's worthwhile for us to say, um, we are interested. Let us have some details and, uh, let us participate.
And is the intent to test every student or the only ones that are deemed to be part of the contact tracing?
Yes, my, my intent is to, is to be part of the program and get more information about the program. You know, I, I, the details are weak from what the governor described. He simply described that they're going to be doing these pilot programs. And I would like us to be involved if, you know, again, we're not making a decision to sign up. We're making a decision to get more information.
I just, I just heard that those tests aren't very accurate. But once we find out information on that, we can see.
You know, I can, I can spitball, you know, if you, if the accuracy is a question, you know, you take them one day after the other. And, you know, the first one could be inaccurate, but if you have three negative tests, at that point, instead of it being a fourteen-day quarantine, it now becomes a five-day quarantine. And, you know, Seth and I have been talking about, you know, what happens when students are at home for, for two weeks? And what happens to their learning? At this point, I think we investigate any, any arrow or any quiver we can to give us more tools. You know, we're all, we all want that vaccine, we all wanted it last month. I don't know if and when it'll show up, but I think it's worthwhile investigating options.
I don't think it ever hurts to get more information. Secondly, I think there's a potential here to gather the kind of information that Seth's looking at. Like, are there asymptomatic carriers? Is there spread going on we're unaware of? So I think that there's a lot of possibility here. And I think, uh, it's good for everyone to be involved in these kind of, um, um, project pilot programs. And if we can get in on that, I'm all for it.
I think, Mr. Miko, the, the one thing that will be key is, is guidance from our Board of Health going to be updated to reflect the quarantine, the, these tests? So right now, uh, there's specific rules of quarantine and a negative test right now does not negate, correct Jenny?
Yeah, so even if you test, if you're exposed and you're in direct contact, you still have to be, even if you test negative, you still have to quarantine for fourteen days because that's how long the virus could take to develop. So I'd just be interested with this, if that's changed or, you know, where I think it could help is if somebody comes to the clinic with a sore throat and a, you know, some, some of the not major symptoms of COVID, but have a headache, fatigue, something like that, and they get tested and they're negative. I think that's where it can give people some peace of mind that, you know, you can still be in school and you're not COVID positive.
Well, the governor also talked about something, um, maybe, I don't know, maybe you remember, about changing that quarantine, right? From lightening it and doing tests like that, coming to schools and, um, going in and saying, well, this person is positive. If this person sits, sits next, next to them is not positive, maybe we can shorten that quarantine to five days. Am I correct there, Jenny?
Yeah, so I'd be interested to see if that's changing for sure.
Yeah.
We'll write the letter. We'll get more information.
Want to go on to number two?
Actually, before he does, I have a clarifying question. I was thinking more as you were talking about that topic, just to go back to the, uh, the board meetings and the notification period. So to meet the notification here for a week, for a Thursday meeting, for the special meeting, should, and we won't know the color until Thursday. Should we just post a meeting every week? Have a meeting notice every week?
Post a meeting for Thursday.
Correct.
Yes.
And then just play it week by week?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, number two memorandum of understanding be resolved upon my recommendation that the memorandum of understanding between the Strongsville Board of Education and the Strongsville Education Association is stated in Exhibit D be accepted.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum. Any discussion? I would like to just say that there's a lot of really good legal language in that memorandum. For me, what it says in a really long way is we thank all our teachers for their efforts. We thank their teachers for going above and beyond, uh, the duty. And hopefully this gives some base, uh, uh, understanding of where the district is, is, with our teachers. But I do want to recognize the things that aren't said in those words. And I do thank all of our teachers for their hard work. Any other comments? Mr. Onagostu, would you take the roll?
It's me.
The motion is by Mr. Roberts and the second is by Mrs. Hausum.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Next up, we have business service report, uh, operations manager Steve Brechner. Steve?
Where are your assistants?
Anxious to leave my return. Uh, tonight, uh, there are some gifts that need to be mentioned. Uh, the gifts are as follows. The Team Miles Memorial Fund donated $2,000 to the Strongsville High School MD Vocational Training to the Strongsville High School M.D. Vocational Training Account for use by the Derby, a school-based enterprise. The purpose of which is to allow students with disabilities and their peer mentors to collaborate together in the creation, design, and development of spirit wear for the school. Clark Reliance donated two thousand dollars to the Strongsville City Schools to be applied towards the purchase of Bolo Sticks for every classroom in the district. Brooke Whitney, second grade teacher at Sarare Elementary School, completed a funding project campaign through Donors Choose, resulting in the purchase of thirty Kensington Hi-Fi headset bundles for student use valued at two hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy cents. Office Depot, Office Max, through the Depot Difference Program, donated a thousand dollar gift card to Whitney Elementary School to be used for supplies. Office Depot, Office Max, also donated a large assortment of school and office supplies to Whitney Elementary School for use by students and teachers. And that's the conclusion of the business services report.
Thank you, Steve.
Make sure you extend our thanks to everyone.
Next up, we have Aaron Green, our Director of Curriculum, with the curriculum report for the month, Aaron.
Good evening, I have three items tonight for your consideration. The first two are revisions to our student fees. So as you know, in early fall, we have a fee list, itemized fees that we charge students that we have okayed or approved by the board. We want to, first one is for elementary. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the following revision be made, and this is Exhibit E. So a revision to the agenda of June fourth, twenty twenty, curriculum item one, the twenty twenty-one student fees. Revised elementary fee list due to our remote hybrid school schedule that we started the fall in. So that has reduced some of the fees, especially for students that we have in different platforms. You can see everything as it's itemized in Exhibit E. Item two is the revision to the secondary student fees. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following revision be made. Again, the revision to the agenda from June fourth, twenty twenty, curriculum item one, the student fees revised secondary fee list due to the remote hybrid school schedule as shown in Exhibit F. And similarly, because of the remote structure, and then the hybrid structure, some of those fees have gone down for students in semester courses or in nine-weeks courses. And also for our solo platform students. And lastly, item three, a student-teacher agreement. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the student, of the superintendent, the student-teacher agreement between Franklin University and Strongsville City School District be approved as presented in Exhibit G. Are there any questions I can answer about those three items?
I just, George, when do you, should parents expect to see the fees for the upcoming school year?
The school secretaries are starting to work on them. Started, I think it started today, above most, probably starting tomorrow or Monday. And depending on how quickly they can get them in and the timeframe. We asked them for, we kind of gave them a two-week window. So if they can meet that two-week window, great. I think the elementaries might be a little easier than the high school might be more time-consuming. So that's our goal, is within two weeks, but maybe a week or so longer.
The other thing I would mention, and this goes to Dave's department, is because we're allowing students in grades three to five to take their Chromebooks back and forth, a part of that is the addition of optional Chromebook insurance, so thirty dollars. So if parents choose to pay the thirty-dollar optional insurance, if something happens to the Chromebook that's an accident and not deliberate damage, the district would cover that.
And the other piece I would like to add to is with the fees, they can be paid in Pay School Central or check or cash at the secretary, or at the school building. But when you are paying in Pay School Central, with a credit card, there is a three-point-nine percent processing fee, a convenience fee that is for the credit card, if paid by credit card, which is based on the amount. Or the other payment option within Pay Schools is you can do an ACH payment, which is like a virtual check. And with that, it's a dollar seventy-five regardless of the amount.
Thanks, George, thanks, Aaron. We do not have any student service items for this month. But our Assistant Superintendent Jenny Puckel will share the human resource update. And for board members, you should have some green sheets as well, there's an addendum to the human resource agenda that you'll go through as well. Hey Jenny?
Thank you, Dr. Raiba. Under human resources, this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. Under E one, resignation of a non-certificated staff member. Under E two, appointments for certificated staff members. Appointment for a non-certificated staff member and appointments for certificated substitutes. Continuing under E two, appointments for certificated permanent substitutes. So I would just like to take a minute, we are going to be hiring permanent certificated substitutes that will be here every single day. They have, you know, already started in, in different positions and are, are being utilized every single day. So that is a huge benefit for Cindy Vaccarella, who works in my office, to know that I have these people that I can call on and she's been calling on them. So that'll be a huge help. Appointments of non-certificated substitutes. Appointment for a certificated athletic supplemental contract. Appointments for non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Appointments for home instruction tutors. Under E three, contract recommendations for non-certificated staff. Under E four, change in full-time equivalent for a certificated staff member. Under E five, educational upgrade for a certificated staff member. Under E six, medical leaves for certificated staff members and medical leaves for non-certificated staff members. Under E seven, unpaid leaves for certificated staff and unpaid leaves for non-certificated staff. And then going to the addendum, under E one, we have resignations for non-certificated staff. E two, appointments for certificated substitutes. Appointments for a few additional certificated permanent substitutes. Appointments for testing consultants. Appointments for certificated athletic supplemental contracts, appointments for non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Appointment for resident educator mentor, we had one additional. And under E eight, stipends for auditorium stage crew and stipends for our mentor committee and a stipend for our video truck technician. And that concludes my report unless you have questions for me.
We do not have any technology items tonight, so that concludes the superintendent's report.
Next is report on Polaris Career Center, Michelle?
I have two things to share with you tonight. One of them is that Polaris is planning a return to their normal schedule, starting this coming Monday, October twenty-sixth. And as far as I've heard so far today, our change in color has not affected that. And they have, in general, had very few points of concern for their classes and their students and teachers. So Polaris is going well and will resume schedule on Monday. The other thing I wanted to share with our community specifically is that we have Swage Lock here in one of our industrial parks. And they have partnered, starting shortly, with Polaris to problem-solve a problem with a teacher in the precision machinery. Now, I don't know exactly what that does, but they, there was an issue with the teacher, but it's hard to find teachers like that. So Swage Lock stepped up and said, not only are we going to help teach this class by letting your students come to our facility and, and learn here with our, our training program, we're also going to pay them as interns and really gear them up for a career i- in this field of precision machinery. So I just want to give a shout-out to Swage Lock and really acknowledge this kind of partnership that is happening in our community. It's a wonderful thing for Polaris and for all of our students to have here in Strongsville. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Next is report on legislation, Sherri?
Okay. I have the one item, the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation issued a dividend to employers in the state of Ohio. Strongsville City Schools received a check for two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars as, which is a hundred percent of their two thousand nineteen premium. And that'll be helpful, so that concludes my report.
So, and that, that will be helpful. I know, I believe George put that in an update recently, so we were aware of it. But it's, every dollar helps.
Yeah, and the check, and just to clarify, the check's on its way, so we should be receiving it this month, so.
Next is board liaison reports. Why don't we start with Michelle and we'll work our way to the left?
Okay, I have two city council meetings to report on this evening. The first was October fifth, twenty twenty. A couple of things of note from that meeting. This is just a reminder that there's a fire levy on the ballot in, in a couple of weeks here. The levy is to support the hiring of twenty full-time firefighters and also the building of a fire station in the center of town. So I'm just going to take this opportunity to remind our community with there's issues on the ballot and with the presidential, presidential election, please get out and do your civic duty and vote. Strongsville's unemployment rate has improved since the beginning of COVID. This is good news for the community. December two thousand nineteen, that rate was two-point-seven percent unemployed. Early in COVID, it was as high as twenty percent, and now we're back to seven-point-nine percent. So not where we need to be, but certainly moving in the right direction. That's good news for Strongsville. Thirdly, is, might be of interest particularly to our younger students' parents. There will be a Santa mailbox available on the square for children to drop letters during the holiday season. So stay tuned for more information about that if that's of interest. And then finally, from that meeting, I just wanted to pass along to my fellow board members, a thank you from Councilman Carbone for all the hard work that we've been doing during this time. So he shares his gratitude with all of us. Second meeting was this week, October nineteenth, twenty twenty. The city, similar with the schools, the city just received its Moody's review. And they received a triple-A with a stable outlook rating. So that's fantastic news, especially in the middle of this crisis. Secondly, there's a new company coming to Strongsville, probably early twenty twenty-one, called Omex Smart Card. And they are investing in our industrial park off of Sprague Road there, the Dow Industrial Circle. This is their first North American facility, so this is a huge investment in our community and it will, of course, bring tax dollars. So good news for the schools as well. You may be aware that there have been flooding issues, especially in light of, of the last few days along Prospect Avenue. They are moving quickly to address those concerns with long-term solutions. So if you have questions or concerns about flooding along Prospect, you can contact Councilwoman Kelly Kosick and she can help you get the information you need. This coming Monday, Economic Development will have a meeting, October twenty-sixth, seven P.M. at BW three. So if you're interested in where this community is going in terms of, we were going to develop the square, et cetera, that's a meeting for you and head out there and check it out. This is just the beginning of the discussion with council, but they've started to talk about possibly rezoning the restrictions for regional retail, which basically affects the mall. And so this is important for us to keep an eye on. They're considering rezoning to allow for hotels, sports facilities, medical facilities, and residential use. So that would completely change what, what the outlook for our mall might be. It'd also change, you know, kind of what, what Strongsville's makeup is. So stay tuned for more details as council continues to discuss that. And finally, good news for those of you who like to access the rec center, it is now open, as of Monday, to all members of all ages. You can check out the website, they've added some new youth family open gyms and other programming. The tot room is still closed, obviously there are some challenges with that right now. And the pool is also currently under construction, so that area is closed. So you can access with your children those areas that are open. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Michelle.
The Education Foundation did meet virtually two Thursday mornings ago. They discussed two major topics, the first being grants for our teachers and staff. The grant application is open and on the website. As far as I know, I don't think anyone has accessed or utilized that yet. They're going to get ahold of you, Dr. Raiba, to have you send something out to our staff.
Absolutely.
But they are offering their grants again this year. The second topic that they discussed was their fundraising. They are looking at different options, rather than doing the Derby that they do that first weekend in May. They're trying to come up with some alternatives for that. And that concludes my report.
Sherri?
Oh, okay, for the council. PTA Council is holding a clothing drive on October twenty-ninth at the rec center parking lot from four to seven o'clock P.M. And the Swanson's food truck will be there from five-thirty to six-thirty P.M.
You had me at Swanson's.
Yeah. And also, you know, since, since they're not able to hold events now, Sarah mentioned and emailed to me that they're not able to raise money the way they usually are. But they are having a big give day for the community, community to contribute to scholarships. The date is still to be determined. And, well, their purpose is to raise money for fun, funding scholarships for our seniors. So if you can get behind that, that would be great. And that concludes my report.
Seth, do you have a report?
I do. Last time we kind of highlighted six students that were National Merit Scholar Program finalists, so again, thank you, congratulations to them. We also had four juniors for the class of twenty twenty-one, sorry, that scored in the top fifty thousand nationally in the PSAT. Congratulations to Miranda, Melanie, Wrang, and Seth. Not me. The, obviously, congratulations to our, our sports teams for, you know, getting through the, the fall here and having successful programs. But also a couple of highlights with that. So Michael Lee was named the GCC Boys Golfers of the Year. Girls College Country Team finished third in the GCC meet with Julia Isham finishing first and earning GCC Runner of the Year. The Boys College Country Team finished fifth in the, in the race. And junior John Yarwood earned first-team all-conference in that as well. There's a couple other mentions in there of conference and, and different accolades, so congratulations to all those, those athletes. Obviously, girls soccer, I believe, can have a win tonight, so congratulations to that. But they're number one overall seed in the Northeastern District and ranked number two in the state. And six straight conference championships. Mike, you have your report?
Next on our agenda is board committee reports. It looks like finances to be announced, policy is to be announced. Sherri or Laura, do you want to talk about facilities?
Do you have anything, Laura? I mean, we did meet.
We did have a meeting last night. It was mine and Sherri's first time being able to hold a facilities committee meeting. It was very interesting. Mr. Brechner was there and they, I think they gave, they gave us an update on buildings and on technology. The big takeaway was that, that we need to do an update to our Jean study that hasn't been done in many years. We need to take a look at the properties of the district buildings in the, in the city and kind of prioritize what those properties are. And we've always had a thirty-year plan for our buildings, they want to change that and make it more of a five-year plan. So it looks like we will be meeting again here in a couple of weeks.
And that date is?
November twelfth, six-thirty P.M. here in the admin buildings. And that concludes our, uh, monster, do you have any to add?
Nope, that was great.
And then the Business Advisory Council Committee, also, the next meeting, meeting is to be announced. Next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent, consent calendar means that all items appearing in the agenda with an asterix are adopted by one single motion unless someone requests otherwise. Are there any requests? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Hausum, any discussion? We did not have any corrections. So there are no corrections, we do have the addendum.
The only, I did have one correction in, or no, it didn't apply to the consent calendar.
That was a separate one.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Hearing none, Mr. Anagostu?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Cameron, you're up again.
So just a few points of timely information. First of all, we had our first virtual concert last night and I spent some time with Mr. Hire today. And just, he was very excited. A special thanks to Scott Benson and our high school sound crew. If Mr. Hire is happy with the way the sound came out, we're all happy. And so just congratulations to him and our- Uh, and so just congratulations to him and our students for really thinking outside of the box and giving a creative opportunity. And that continues with, uh, next Wednesday, we have a virtual concert for our choir as the schedule is stated there. So just wherever you're streaming the board meetings or on your, uh, Apple TV or Firestick or on the website, it'll be there just with every other event. And, uh, check out, uh, the, the choir. The really cool thing for us when we live stream, it actually pinpoints where people are live streaming from. So, uh, it's great to see the span across the country, uh, that this, uh, that this is seen by family and relatives. So it's really a cool opportunity. And, uh, we announced this a few weeks ago, um, but we have the Here Comes the Bus app, so just a reminder, you should be, uh, I still get the update for Fritz Miko every time when, uh, when the bus is arrived. So I'm happy to know Fritz is getting on the bus every day when the school starts.
If only that were true.
But, um, you know, we ask parents to, to be patient with us, give us a few weeks, uh, and really, it's been pretty quiet, uh, in terms of how the app is, uh, working. So, uh, you know, in terms of looking at, a, a year ago, we had no cameras, no GPS, no bus app, and, and today we do. Uh, we really got in our transportation department in a, in a good, uh, good place. And so if you need any tips for downloading that app, use it, contact your building principal. They have, uh, the flyer. And if you have any issues, now is the time where you can start contacting transportation. And they've been able to quickly problem-solve some of the issues that may be there. So that's my timely information.
Just as a follow-up, and it, it wouldn't be now, but at some point in the year, it might be nice to, to survey and make sure that the app is being, uh, is being used and is actually, uh, helping parents. For example, I'm driving Fritz to school, so it's nice to know where his bus would have been, but, uh, I don't know how useful it is. But it has been nice to follow his bus, uh, kind of like on a Lyft or an Uber app.
Yeah. That's it?
Board of Education, other, the first one is, uh, Ohio School Board Association Virtual Capital Conference. Be it resolved that the Strongsville City School Boards of Education grants approval for Michelle Bissell and Laura Wolf Hausum to attend the OSBA Virtual Capital Conference on November 7th through the 10th. The cost is $175 per person. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Buckner. Any discussion? Hearing none. George?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries and thank you for continuing to improve your boardmanship. I have one other. Speaking of PTA fundraising, uh, this will segue nicely. Uh, car raffle tickets are on sale. If you'd like to purchase a car raffle ticket to win a, I believe Chevy Trax, again, uh, see an athlete, an instrumental music member, or a PTA member to purchase a ticket. Uh, the tickets are $20 each. There are only 3,000. If you buy all 3,000, you're guaranteed to win the car. And, uh, the tickets will be on sale on Saturdays on Pearl and Radamaker Miller from noon to three, uh, to benefit our students and our student athletes, and they will be doing it in a safe, uh, manner. Uh, and you can also purchase them with credit card if you want to do something contactless. Does anybody else have any other? Hearing none, meeting notification. We have a regular Board of Education meeting work session on Thursday, November 5th at 7:00 PM here in the admin building, along with a November 19th, 7:00 PM in the meeting room of the admin building, along with a,
Special board meeting?
On Monday at 6:30.
Yes.
Along with another special board meeting on Thursday,
October 29th.
At 7:00 PM. Do I have all of them?
Yes.
We do have need for, I'm sorry?
I was looking at the calendar. So for November, November 12th, which is a Thursday, and also conflicts with, uh, finance, with the facilities committee meeting. Should we schedule that and reschedule?
Uh, you leave that to the facilities committee meeting to figure it out. We'll figure, we'll have to figure it out when we get there.
Okay.
Okay? Uh, we do have need for executive session on the topic of,
To consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I will give it to Mrs. Buckner via hair. Motion by Mr. Roberts, second by Mrs. Buckner. Any discussion? Hearing none. George?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Soli?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will enter into executive session at 9:40. I do want to thank everyone for their attention and their, uh, consideration. Uh, we are, uh, working through these tough times and I appreciate everyone's, uh, input and insight. Thank you very much.